Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, January 29, 2019. We have a very full agenda tonight. At 7:00, we're starting off with community input. At 7:05, we'll be discussing the appointment of the town facilities manager. At 7:25, the appointment of the finance director, treasurer, collector. 7:45, the conservation commission proposed revised job description for the assistant to the conservation administrator. At 8:00, citizens petition for town meeting warrant regarding nitrogen loading credits for 2123 Bedford Road. At 8:20, presentation for the household recycling committee regarding the transfer station report and recommendations. At 8:50, the deer committee report to the selectmen regarding the fall 2018 hunting pilot program. At 9:30, a review of proposed town meeting warrant articles. At 10:00, the town administrators report. At 10:15, the board of selectmen liaison reports. At 10:25 minutes, and at 10:30 adjournment. Again, as always, some of the smaller items we may take out of order if we are running ahead of schedule. So with that, I will open it up for any community input. Yes?
Hello, my name is Jeannie Janetzko, and I'm in Maple Street in Carlisle. And I have three inputs. One is that at the deer committee meeting at the beginning of January, I think it's the beginning of January, the deer committee said they would not give us a copy of the final deer report, and they said that what had happened is they would give that deer report to the board of selectmen, and it was up to the board of selectmen to determine the distribution of that deer committee report. I am requesting that since it is a public document that I would have received that document, that it be made available to me. Number two, as was mentioned at the last BOS meeting by a Carlisle citizen, I am reminding the board of selectmen of their promise that there would be a public meeting on deer. I haven't heard anything more about it, and there has been no meeting so far, nor any notification of that meeting. And third, I would like to place my own placeholder for a warrant article with respect to the deer hunt and hunting on town lands and town forests for this upcoming town meeting. So those are the three items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll respond to one of the things, which is that any report that is discussed or presented at the board of selectmen meeting is public at the, along with the minutes of the meeting.
It's on the website?
Yeah, it's on the website, the report. Okay. Okay. So that report is available. This meeting here is the public meeting that the board of selectmen is having on the deer issue. Sorry, is there anybody else here for public input? Yes?
Barbara Lewis, East Riding Drive. I'm a member of the Carlisle Artisans and also parental unit, or spousal unit of one of the board members.
Is it parental?
Yeah, not parental.
(Laughter).
(Inaudible) before you're coming from.
I'm here this evening because it was brought to my attention recently by Marjorie Johnson that at the State House, there's a Hall of Flags, and there are 351 flagstaffs, one for each city and town in Massachusetts. Several are standing empty. One of them is Carlisle's. And I thought perhaps there was something that we could do about that. So Marjorie did some research and found the right person at the State House to get input on what, how to go about, and we have some criteria, dimensions, and expectations of flags that fly or hang there. And I've recently found out that instead of having to do any design work or figure out what to create as a town flag, we do have sanctioned, approved by town meeting in 1973, an official town flag. So it's in the possession of the Minutemen, and so I've made a few calls in trying to contact the person who has the flag. I can't wait to see it. I do have some pictures of it, and I also have a copy. This is all thanks to Charlene, who knew just where to look in the files, but it's a very attractive flag, so that helps to move forward on this if it is approved. But I'll just pass this around. This can be handed over.
Sure.
It's very nice looking, and it is mostly the town seal, which is what I would have gone with myself if we had to design one. But now it's all a matter of, now that we have the official design, it's a matter of process and figuring out how to replicate it. And as soon as I get to see it, knowing how it was created in the first place, and maybe by whom, but that may be lost, it's not in the information I have. So yeah, I'd like to get another copy of the flag if there is only one, and maybe more than one more copy, one to be at the State House. And if we have any other use for a town flag in town, I could help to make that happen, too. Haven't found any cost, at this point, cost estimates were not forthcoming when you didn't have, when I didn't have a very secure design or plan, then the companies that I did do research on weren't ready to give any kind of guess. So it could be several hundred dollars. It could be lots more if we wanted to do it very elaborate. Some of the, I went on the State House, the state website, and saw all the other designs, some very elaborate, some very simple. So anyway, just offering my services, our services, we're gonna make this happen.
Great. Is the background, is, I'm just wondering if it's, is it brown or is it a maroon?
Yeah. And so I really would like the idea of the flag fitting in but standing out. I think that that is a very exciting look, myself, and it is, unless we decide to approve a different design, that's the one I think we would go with.
Barbara, because you presented this to us at the table due to the open meeting law, we're gonna need to have a copy to include with our minutes. Can we keep this one?
May.
All right, I will give that to the...
Sounds like it, looks like it came from town.
Well, it may have, but I just, I wanted not to have to chase it.
And it's also in the files here. That's a copy that was made for me today.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public input?
Jen, I'm having real trouble hearing people.
Can you hear now?
Can you hear a little better?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, well.
I think this is our minutes now.
I think there's somebody else.
Yeah.
Public input, I'm not sure.
I can hear most of the people at the table, but...
All right, well, we'll give it another try after that adjustment. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, I'm all clear, yeah.
All right, anybody else for public input? Yes?
Good evening. My name is George Vendura from Maple Street. I wanted to suggest that I represent some of the speakers here, and of course, I also represent the BOS, and I represent everybody in line with what the BOS is doing. Our concern, thank you, thank you very much. Our concern is getting a warrant, of course, onto the town meeting with respect to the deer hunt. It's our understanding that there's, from Mr. Goddard, that there is already a placeholder in place for that warrant, that the BOS already has something to that effect reserved, and they met some sort of deadline, and that's gonna be addressed. My understanding also with respect to that is that, of course, the BOS is going to write the warrant or prepare a warrant. Now, this is all a little vague on our part because we don't know the true, full process, and we don't know the full content of that warrant yet because it's just a placeholder. Apparently, it's just a title. So this thing is going to be written, of course, in the proper language for the town meeting and the warrant, whatever you want to call it, the document that's being prepared. We would like to say in the writing of that, very much, we would like to co-write it with the BOS, and we assume that that is the process. The reason why this is important, by the way, we're not trying to finagle in or control anything, but as we know from the history of this deer hunting, a lot of complications and controversy came up with the BOS or the deer committee or whomever writing, for instance, the signage, that some committee or subcommittee, the deer committee to be specific, wrote into their agenda, their feeling of what they were supposed to do with the signage. So they went ahead with the signage, and then the signage became complicated because it wasn't strong enough, it wasn't weak enough, it didn't have red paper, and so we could have benefited by working the signage, working the words together. So you guys, or we guys, or us guys, we guys in English, should perhaps take part in the warrant preparation so that the BOS doesn't put a spin on it that represents your best case without having us with the input of that writing, too. So my suggestion here, or maybe my question here, is that the warrant will be written. You, BOS has a placeholder for it. We support that, and we want to support that more proactively by actually being part of the language so that we don't have differences of opinion and the warrant gets basically teetered to one side or the other side without us holding hands and do it in a common manner. Separately from that, in order to protect us from that, we, the citizens, propose our own warrant with respect to the deer hunt. Now, you might say, well, this is redundant, or this is gonna be us or them. No, not at all. Perhaps, because I don't know what the language will be with, I'll call it the BOS warrant, the BOS reserved placeholder, we're proposing a separate warrant, and with this meeting and with this date, with Mr. Goddard's help, we want to make sure that we are going to propose a second one, and it goes on the agenda as the warrant agenda as tonight. Now, what are we trying to do that we wouldn't do with your warrant? But we don't know what your warrant is, and I don't think you know what your warrant is because we haven't figured out the language. Our warrant, which sounds redundant, is not redundant. It addresses the language or the thrust of the very important editorial that was in the Carlisle mosquito. And so the thrust of this warrant is, here it goes. This is from, by the way, editorial. Let me read the editorial, just a little piece, okay? "The question is, the whether, the where, the when, the how of bow hunting in Carlisle will be decided at meetings." So this is sort of like an overview. Where does the authority lie with respect to the deer hunt? Well, maybe your warrant is the details of the deer hunt. So we want to know, or we want to empower this Carlisle and help the BOS to find out where the authority lies. Now, what has happened before is that there was a question of who's running, who's running the decision-making here. We went back and forth for weeks and weeks and weeks with respect, is it the BOS that has the ultimate authority, or is it the deer committee that has the ultimate authority? And the conservation committee is also somehow, you know, used as a source. And there's also the board of health and the Lyme Committee. All these people have a stake in the deer hunt or the non-deer hunt. So our separate, proposed, not redundant warrant will address basically who and what is the organization and authority. For instance, the Carlisle mosquito says, well, it's the citizens, right? I mean, it goes to a complete general vote. So it's not the BOS, it's not the board of health, it's not the deer committee, it's not the conservation committee, and it's not the Lyme Committee. So again, with this discussion right now, this monologue I'm having, where we also know there's the January 22 deadline for the warrants, which is passed, but then Mr. Goddard says, no, that's loose, and it's still open. With this statement, on this day, on January 29, we are now staking our own, our citizens, I'll call it, a claim to a separate warrant for addressing these issues of the deer hunt.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else for public input? Okay, not seeing any. Let's go to the appointment of the town facilities manager.
Okay, if I could invite Steve to come down front and meet the board.
Come on up, Steve, and you can sit right here. You don't have to stand up.
This is Steve Bastak, who is our recommended candidate for town facilities manager. And I'll let Steve can introduce himself and his background. I'll just tell you that this was rather a long search for a facilities manager. We advertised a number of times, the most recent committee that conducted the interviews included Kate and myself, Bill Rizzo, John Mativier, and Rob Fortato, who is the school's new facilities manager, replacing David Flannery. And of the candidates that we interviewed, you know, we certainly, we felt Steve kind of stood out as, you know, not only being, you know, qualified in the field, but having, you know, a good manner about himself and kind of having a nuts and bolts appreciation for facilities, and, you know, we felt he was a real can-do kind of person, and we liked that, and he got along very well with the school facilities manager. After we interviewed with him, he met with the facilities committee, the municipal facilities committee, and they unanimously recommended this board that you appoint him, but I'll turn it over to Steve to introduce himself and his background.
So my name's Stephen Bastak. I'm a Tingsborough, Mass resident. Been in Tingsborough for almost 20 years now. Before that, I lived in Drake at Mass. I have a background in electrical, as he mentioned. I am a master electrician. I hold license current in Mass and New Hampshire as a master electrician. I also hold a grade-two wastewater treatment license in the state of Massachusetts, which is also current at this time. My background consists from, right from grade or low Volk school, continuing chasing my career throughout the last 30 years in the field of electrical and maintenance inside of facilities operations, including mission-critical data centers. The last company that I was working with, working for, was a semiconductor industry, and have wide range of background in house, doing electrical, field projects, running projects, bringing projects together to get things done. Also have, just trying to pursue the next level of wastewater treatment, which will probably bring myself up to a grade four, which will happen. I have to go to school, go back to get that license again to follow up on extending it to a grade four. But if you have any questions, I'm sure glad to listen.
So I have some questions, but so when you saw the Carlisle job posting, what made you decide to?
I'm looking for something that I'm not traveling and doing an excess amount of time traveling and trying to get back into more facilities-related role as more than I was doing electrical work. I like doing the facilities aspect of things. I like running jobs. The hours seem pretty good for me because it was a part-time position, and at this point in my life, my wife is retired, and I am trying to spend a little more time at home with my wife at this point, and I'm just trying to, you know, make the best of things as I can at this point in my life.
Okay. Another question is, you know, when you say, when you're expedient, you say that you manage the data center, daily operational functions. At what level did you manage them? What types of thing, daily operations?
At that point, that is a mission-critical environment. We had multiple operations throughout the country. At my facility, I would run it remote and then pass through all the information needed to our corporate headquarters in Pennsylvania. So I would gather and collect bids for jobs that needed to get done during the year and propose those to the corporate headquarters to get approval for this type of work that needed to get done, and try to foresee, you know, problems that were gonna come forth in the future, and equipment that was gonna have, you know, rundown failure times and things of that nature, and try to propose new equipment so that we weren't running in the face of, it's too late now, it failed. We try to be proactive about trying to get equipment up and running and not have it go into a failure mode. It's not always possible, but we always try to, it was like a game of chess, trying to, I'll think, you know, what is the real runtime of this piece of equipment versus what we're actually using it at this point.
And that equipment was like the HVAC system, the fire suppression system, the generators?
Absolutely, generators.
Not the actual systems and computers and what was in the cages and things like that?
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's not anything what I would do. The physical facility itself was what I would be in charge of, and that was, like you said, all the base operations of the facility, and then propose those to corporate to get those jobs done and get them done on time and then on budget. And that was the primary thing, and as well as doing emergency electrical repairs, things of that nature that came up during the day. If some type of breaker tripped or some piece of equipment needed to be tested, I was on site to do that type of work, as well as bring contractors in to perform the work that I couldn't do.
Okay. What do you see as the, just two more questions.
Yes, that's good.
What do you see as the biggest challenge to the person coming into this role?
Trying to play catch-up on what you guys haven't done over the years. It's probably trying to prioritize what the list of things that you guys have put forth right now and get that rolling out the door so that, you know, you're not falling behind, you know, over time, because time is your worst enemy. You're just gonna keep backing things up over time and trying to set forth goals to get things done.
Okay. And then just one other question. So, you know, you mentioned one of the reasons why, you know, this job was, you know, the hours, you know, more time at home, totally get that. What's the, you know, I guess it's almost the opposite of the question I just asked, but what's the most exciting thing about this role for you?
Exciting, I'd say just to get my hands back into doing that type of work again and being in charge and getting to know people and knowing contractors, because when you work one-on-one with people, you end up becoming more like a family with people, and I like that role and meeting new people and getting things done and seeing how people work, and I think the people part of it is probably the best part of the job.
Great. So you gotta work with this guy.
Well, he's been working with me, and he's been okay, so how bad could it be?
Have you had much budget experience?
Yeah, somewhat, yeah. We had budgets that we had to maintain and follow at the data center, and we had to make sure that, you know, we were staying in those numbers, like any business, you know, you try to stay in that number that's put forth, but it doesn't always happen, but you try to make it happen.
Have you done much in budget development?
No. Not a budget development.
Well, he'll be working with the municipal facilities committee, which has been doing it, and so I don't think that's, and we are looking forward, very much forward to Stephen for helping us do that because we're doing it, but we're doing it, you know, in the dark. At least he knows more than we do about a lot of these things.
Knows what it costs.
So, yeah, about the costs, you know? And then, so I think, I think the two entities together will grow and learn together.
Working with the new school.
Have you worked in government before?
No. My wife has worked for the Air Force for 37 years. She retired from the Air Force, but I haven't had any government experience. Just listen to her, though.
Yeah.
What we do often doesn't seem much like government either, so it's all right.
And I'm really sorry to tell you, but since we last saw you, we've fallen further behind. So hurry up and come.
All right, we move the board of selectmen vote to appoint.
Well, I just wanted to also tell you that the municipal facilities committee is very enthusiastic about bringing Stephen on board and, you know, enthusiastically endorse his appointment.
Excellent.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I would just say that, you know, two of the questions, you know, like, you know, have you worked in government? You know, do you have budget experience? I, you know, you have a tremendous amount of experience of what, of what we need. And I also think that it's important that somebody who's moving into a role, any role, there's something that they're going to be learning, and so that there's some fulfillment for them as well. So, you know, personally, I'm not worried about that, that, you know, that's the thing that you would be learning, but the, you know, the base level of skills and the experience you have is clearly, to me anyway, what we need in this town.
And I'll just tell you, Bill was also very excited. Gentlemen.
Okay, so is, I think there's a motion here.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Mr. Stephen Bastak of Tingsborough, Mass as the facilities manager for the town of Carlisle.
Should we put his address in there, in case there's more than one Stephen Bastak in Tingsborough?
I think it's... I don't have his address.
It's resume, yeah.
Tim, do we need the term of the appointment? Do we need to discuss that?
Well, the appointment, you will reappoint all town officers in June.
Yeah, okay. So his appointment is until June 30.
Yeah, okay. It'll be up for reappointment at that point.
We'll be appointed in June when we reappoint everybody.
It's a routine kind of thing, so I don't think we need to...
Okay. I just wasn't sure.
Address is for Belfair Lane.
Okay.
Okay, and is there a second? So, okay, any further discussion?
I have a question. Steve, hi.
Hello.
Tim, could you just recap quickly the relation, the reporting relationship in terms of Steve will be reporting both to committee and for some things to you? How will that work out?
Well, I think for, Steve will be taking his direction from the facilities committee, who has a program of projects to manage for kind of the mechanics of procurement and budgeting and so forth. I'll be working closely with Steve, as will Jen, quite frankly, for legal requirements, advertising of bids and quotes and so forth, so it'll be, it'll be a joint effort in a lot of ways.
But I think the simple answer, though, is that Stephen is gonna be reporting to Tim.
Right. I think that's exactly what I was...
Right. The contracting authority is with this board and me for you.
Yes.
Correct.
Helping in setting priorities and everything.
In terms of reporting.
Yeah.
Even reports to you.
A whole philosophy of...
He'll be working with the committee to set priorities and things like that, but he reports to Tim.
Yes, no, we've talked about that.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm trying to answer for Kerry.
Yeah, right.
So it's reporting, reporting to Tim with prioritization help through the committee?
Right, right.
Okay. And, okay.
Okay.
Did you vote?
Did you vote?
No, not yet.
Okay.
We had, anything else, Kerry?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot about you on the computer. Did you have, did you have any questions for Stephen?
No, no.
No?
No. He seems evidently qualified. Anybody that understands electricity is...
I know when I don't have it. Okay, all those in favor? It's a roll call because Kerry's remote.
Because Kerry's remote.
Reed, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
It's unanimous.
Okay. We're good.
So we're gonna vote this direction.
Congratulations.
Okay, because...
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see the next municipal meeting.
When do you start?
Well, as soon as we can, we've got to figure out some of the terms of employment and pre-employment physical, he can start, and wants to start right away, so.
So, would you like me to come in?
That's right. We'll talk in the morning, if that's all right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve.
Okay.
Intrepid reporter to get her story.
No, she's getting a picture.
Oh, picture for the paper. Okay.
Okay, so appointment of the finance director.
Okay, could I ask, Bonnie, if I could come forward?
Nice to meet you.
This is the good news portion of the meeting.
Bonnie, I recommended a candidate for finance director, treasurer, collector. We posted Kerry's position just as soon as she announced that she was leaving, because this is a hard position to fill, quite frankly, and we were fortunate to get some good applications. The interview committee that I put together, again, consisted of Kate and Priscilla Dumpka, our town accountant, Simon Platt of the audit committee, Victor Leong, and Scott Triola, the finance committee, and myself. So we interviewed a number of candidates who had good qualifications, but, you know, far and away, Bonnie...
Head and shoulders.
Had the best qualifications, and by way of background, she applied for this position...
When Larry retired...
And by way of background, she applied for this position when Larry retired three years ago, I guess. And frankly, was our number one choice then, but we couldn't convince her to leave Littleton at that time, but we're very pleased that she's, she's applied again. And also, in full disclosure, I hired her 13 years ago in Littleton and I'm very enthusiastic.
I was gonna say it, so.
Yeah, about her possibly coming here.
How much does Littleton hate us for?
Well, yeah, I'm about to find out.
Don't drive through Littleton if you're calling.
And Bonnie met the Finance Committee last night and both the Finance Committee and the Audit Committee unanimously recommend that the Board appoint her. So with that.
Thank you.
Bonnie, you can introduce yourself.
Sure. So my name is Bonnie Fleck. I obviously, as Tim said, work in Littleton currently. I've been in municipal finance for almost 20 years, 19 years this year. Prior to that, I have a banking background, retail banking, commercial lending and residential lending. So I'm, I've been in finance pretty much my whole career. I've been in Littleton for 13 years, as Tim said, he hired me. And about six months after I started, he gave his notice and I was like, oh, God, you know.
Yeah, great guy.
You know, obviously, when you, when you pick your career where you're gonna go, you pick the team that you're gonna be working with. So I was very disappointed at the time. I should disclose, I also work with Jen in Littleton, you know, for about 12 years, 11 and 12 years. So it was, it was a really good team. I loved the environment there and I still love the environment. I have a great management team. I will tell you that three years ago when I applied, the reason that I didn't come is my daughter was still choiced in at the school district there. So it's gonna be a little bit of logistics to get her to school and pick her up like midday and drop her off because as a choice-in student, you don't get busing or anything like that. So that was really what it came down to. My daughter, I live in Leominster, has joined the Leominster School District, is very happy there, so it's a, it's a different set of circumstances at this point. In Littleton, I served as the Finance Director and for 11 years, I served also as the Assistant Town Administrator, the Chief Procurement Officer. I served as Town Accountant, HR Director and, you know, Investigator and a whole bunch of other stuff. About three years ago, they divided my position into two. It left me at Finance Director, which is what my desire was to be, and hired a separate Assistant Town Administrator. So that's, you know, worked pretty well. The duties haven't exactly been divided, you know, it's, it's a growing process, you know, it takes a little bit of time. But, you know, they're, they're working towards that. Also undertaken in the last three years, we've done a major system conversion. We've gone from soft right, software, our financial suite, to Munus. We're about three-quarters of the way through the conversion. All the core financials, accounts payable, general ledger is converted. We're in the middle of payroll, tax and human resources now. And I'm doing pretty well with it, everything's working. Right now, I'm working on the tax conversion and my treasurer and collector, my treasurer and HR person is working on payroll and HR with me. So we've got a lot on our hands, but I have a really good group of individuals and we work really well as a team. So that's a little bit about my background, I don't know.
So I am actually gonna ask the first question, but I'm gonna direct it at Tim. So you left six months after hiring her. What are your plans?
Yeah, no, no, I made a promise to stay here if she comes over this time. Very much wanna, yeah, wanna work together. And, you know, since I left there, you know, doesn't know so years ago, I've been town moderator all the time in between, so I've had a chance to see, you know, what Bonnie's done over there with the Consolidated Finance Department and policies and procedures and they're, they're pretty close to funding OPEB and they've done some really remarkable things. They've had a lot of growth too, but, you know, managing the growth is not easy too. But maybe if you could talk about the policies and procedures, because we desperately need them.
Sure, I actually looked online to see your policies and procedures and couldn't find them. I did see that the Division of Local Services had made some recommendations about some templates or pretty much generalized policies and procedures, but I didn't see that they were adopted yet. When I went to Littleton, we really didn't have much for financial policies and we have a very robust set of policies that we follow and we adhere every year. And it's almost, it's rote. We just, we go through them every year, we review them, and then we go through them for our financials and make sure that we've put the reserves away that we need to, that we're allocating enough to replenish our free cash every year. Those are done before we even craft the budget. So those things are off the table. Through our policies, you know, we've, we've raised our bond rating, we're a AAA community with standard and pores, which we're very proud of. We maintain some high levels of reserves. And again, they're all dictated through policy, so it's off the table before it's even discussed. OPEB, we are almost, we're very close to meeting the arc, which I'm really happy about. So we're putting about, we put 2.3 million aside last year and we're putting about 2 million aside this year. Last year, we took additional amounts out of our free cash. That required us to augment OPEB first, so we did that. 2 millions are kind of our normal amount. We do have to increase that by 10% every year. We set aside about 10% of new revenues, which includes amounts out of the tax levy, unappropriated just to replenish our free cash and make sure that we have that available for capital. We stopped doing debt exclusion overrides and using free cash on the operating budget between 2008 and 2009, which is a real accomplishment for Littleton. Back when I came, they were using free cash in the operating budget. There was no 10-year capital plan. We have, we had annual capital appropriations, but no plan. And I say plan loosely, it's a fluid document, you know, you put things out 10 years, it's, they're gonna change. But we know kind of what we're looking at, where the big items are coming in and what might be, you know, what we might need to pull in versus push out. We do that in coordination with all of the department heads, which I'm really proud of. We get everybody together in one room for a budget hearing day on a Saturday in January, which, you know, nobody really wants to do, but everybody, you know, comes in and participates. So everybody hears the same story, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, all of the department heads hear everybody's budget. So there's no question of what's that one doing, you know, what might be presented to the Selectmen might be different than the Finance Committee heard because time changes things. So I, you know, I like that process, everybody hears the same message. Because of that, over a few years, it really got to fostering an environment where even the departments, I mean, this year is a good example, our Fire Department, the chief requested an additional staff person. Well, he's got a new station and a new ladder truck and six new paramedics over the last four years. And he went to the budget hearing and he said, you know what, I'm gonna withdraw this because there are other needs and I recognize that, you know, even though the Board's not pressuring him to withdraw it, he, he's involved in the process. And he said, you know, the Highway Department needs things, Police Department needs things, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold back this year. And that just, it creates a good environment, a working environment, you know, for the departments. And everybody knows what everybody else is doing. So it's, it's a nice place to work.
Thank you. Questions? You gonna start, Kerry, any questions?
Bonnie, it's so nice to meet you. I've heard so many wonderful things about you.
Thank you.
So I'm very happy to meet you. We're, we're in the process of kicking off a master plan next year, potentially, if we get the money for it.
Well, down to down.
You've gone through that fairly recently, I believe, in Littleton, the master planning process update.
Yes, we have.
What do you see as, as what your role might be for a five-year look-ahead kind of a, kind of a planning process?
In Littleton, what we found success in is creating a master plan implementation committee, which kind of puts forward, like you do the, the plan and then, you know, it could, somebody could file it away and it could gather dust on the shelf. There's not a committee to follow through with the implementation process. So I work with them through the budget process to figure out what their needs are, you know, identifying the needs in the plan and meeting those funding requirements and getting them out to the, to the voters and to the boards and committees that need to vote on recommending those items. And, you know, some of them are more popular than others, but, you know, they, they need to be put out there, otherwise the plan's gonna get stale-dated and, you know, fall out of useful, usefulness.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So aside from the four people on the other side of the table and the one on the computer, what do you see as your biggest challenge in this new role?
I think, you know, the communities, every community that I've been in is very different. So learning the community flow and priorities is always my first kind of priority in my, in my own career. What's important for Littleton is not necessarily what's important to Carlisle. And a good example that I've mentioned to the Finance Committee is just driving through the community. Littleton, you know, it's on, it's 495 and Route 2 and there's a lot of, you know, transient traffic that drives through commuting. So their priority in doing roadways is complete streets. They want bike lanes, they want sidewalks, they want traffic to move through, fast, quick, get out. So when we build roads, we build them with all of this infrastructure and we meet complete street guidelines. That's the community goal. Driving here tonight, you know, it's, and it's, it's a different feel. It's narrower streets, you're trying to, it feels like it's trying to slow traffic to, you know, meet the community goals. You don't want big sidewalks going through. Or that's just the impression that I get. So it's just kind of identifying what those goals are and seeing how you can develop your financial policies and guidelines to meet those goals, because they're different in every town. They can be very different in adjacent towns. So it, that is what I like. It's almost like a puzzle and it's, it fits with the financial documents that you create. It's fitting everything together and making it flow the right way that the community wants. It's not my document, it's, it's yours. So I think that's, that's probably my challenge initially, getting to see how things run. You know, it's a lot of observation in the first few months, you're not gonna go in, you know, making changes right away, you know, you have to see how things work. But I like to identify that fit and, and kind of work that puzzle together to, to meet your goals.
Well, again, I was at, last night's FinCom meeting and they were very enthusiastic in support of this, this appointment.
So you may, you may wanna become friends with Stephen, who was here before, because as I understand it, where you sit is very, very cold in the wintertime.
We need it.
Probably less so.
We need our boots.
I checked for doing, but yeah.
So anybody?
I don't have any other questions.
Priscilla, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Ample opportunities. Priscilla was on the committee and she was with us last night at FinCom as well.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Ms. Bonnie Mae Fleck of Leominster, Mass., 20 Myrtle Street, as the Finance Director, Treasurer and Tax Collector for the Town of Carlisle.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll start with you, Kerry.
Kissing her eye.
Reed, I.
Brown, I.
Oscar Lillaway. Louis, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I shake your hand, but I can't. Thank you.
I don't blame her.
Gonna get the 26th on her agenda.
She's kissing.
Yeah, I don't know when she's starting.
Oh, we didn't, didn't talk about that. Bonnie, before you go, do you want to tell the Board about the start date? Are you gonna work that out?
Yeah, I mean, we can work those terms out. I think I have enough flexibility, you know, that, my contract says that I have to give 60 days' notice, but I have a lot of vacation time because I've been mid-conversion and I haven't taken any. So I told Tim that we could kind of work things out. And Littleton is a good community to work with. They'll, they'll.
More like 30 days, probably.
With some shuffle back and forth, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I should ask that earlier.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, 7:45, there about. We're gonna move on to the proposed job description for the Assistant to the Conservation Administrator.
I don't see them here.
All right, why don't you just run? Love some. We'll give one minute break.
Okay. I have this, I asked for it in color, because I found it very hard to read. I don't know if you can see it in color.
I did, what's happening?
Okay.
Go see if it's not there.
Really? Because mine, mine.
Oh, no, you're right. I didn't see the color.
Well.
I didn't realize that there was, there are edits.
Yes. That's what I.
Anybody else? Kate, you wanna what?
I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
That can ask me as soon as I sit down?
No.
Okay. Yeah, when you print it to the PDF, could you print it in color?
I can do that right now.
No, no.
In, in future.
For the packet.
Yeah, you know what, I think when I realized it was, there was two options for red line immersion.
No, we got the red line, it's just we can't.
Well, we got the strikeout.
Nobody wants to hear me.
No, we really don't. Actually, the community has spoken.
It's so heavy.
I won't stop.
They are here now.
All right, so we'll move on to the proposed revised job description for Assistant to Conservation Administrator. Now, do you wanna?
I'm up front.
Good evening.
Good evening. He just wants to be on camera.
I'm Angie Verge, I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Sylvia Willard, our Conservation Administrator. And we are here for two requests. I know one is on the agenda, so I just wanna make sure that the change in hours, increase in hours for the Administrative Assistant to the Conservation Administrator is something that we're also talking about. So the reason we're here is the change, you know, the, the needs of the town have changed. The needs of the Conservation Commission office have changed. We have been asking for an increase in hours for our Administrative Assistant for over five years now?
Oh, I was on the board.
You were. At one point, too. So basically, where we're, where we're at is we're requesting that our Administrative Assistant be up to 35 hours per week. This is a request that we had put before the Personnel Board in January of 2017, which they reviewed the job description, the job requirements, and approved and agreed that the job did require 35 hours. Last year, we asked for that and, you know, we understand that there were no hours given. So we're back again. So we went to the Personnel, excuse me, the Finance Committee with our request and they asked us to go back to Tim to see if the request was still valid or if the conditions were still the same. We then went back to the Personnel Board and got our second approval that, yep, job still requires 35 hours. So then we went back to Finance Committee, who said, go to Board of Selectmen. So we're respecting the process and we've been back and forth a few times and now we're here. So we had, we had sent you some information about the job description, but I just wanted to start briefly with the hours. So again, this is something that we've been going on for quite a while now. Again, the needs of the town have changed, we just can't keep up with the workload. Right now, we have a lot more projects in town that require wetland permitting, a lot of the projects are bigger. And even some of these smaller development projects where we have, you know, four or five houses going in, some of the problems are just exponential and it requires a lot of Sylvia's time being out of the office, doing site visits, to kind of understand what's going on. And having somebody in the office at those times is definitely critical because we still have our everyday filings in addition to that. So we did spend some time too, looking at the efficiencies of the office, because of course the Finance Committee said, well, can't you do the same job in the same amount of hours that you currently have? So we did spend some time meeting with Tom Smith, we met with Victor Liang, reviewed what we do in our office. They spent some time with us going over things and I think they understand a little bit about how our office works. And we have an Administrative Assistant currently who is extremely capable of bringing more efficiencies to the office if she has time to bring the efficiencies to the office. There are databases that can be, better filing systems, management of our projects to help kind of bring the, some order to the office. Again, we just don't have that time. In addition to that, you know, we have more subcommittee responsibilities. Right now, the Cranberry Bog Working Group, our new one, is gearing up and this is gonna to be something that's going to take a significant amount of the office's time in the next couple of years. In addition to that, we have the Deer Hunt Program, which Mary was given, and to date, she has spent approximately 60-plus hours uncompensated for this particular project.
And that's within a short period of time. It's between, say, the middle of July, and I came on board with her when I was overseas.
So, I'm sorry to do this, but the hours just isn't anywhere in our packet here? Could we start with the job?
Yes.
The job changes?
Yep, yep.
Because we're not going to be able to say anything.
It might have been my misunderstanding. I thought we were going to talk about the job description first, and, I mean, the two are related. There's no question.
I know, because FinCom was waiting for this discussion.
In, well, I guess just ask a question about FinCom then.
Sure.
Is, are the hours then in your guideline? Did they put those money in the, your guideline enough for the five hours?
Yes.
Or whatever. So that's already in your guideline?
Right, so.
Okay.
That, that was there.
All right.
What isn't there is the changing grade that would come with change in them from...
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. And they're somewhat related, somewhat related. So when we last met with the Personnel Board, we kind of got a better idea of how the grade and step program works. It's a little confusing. There were some misunderstandings between various departments. We got a good education as far as how that works. We have been, this is now our second attempt to try to change the job description. And basically, we don't need an Administrative Assistant. We need an Assistant to the Conservation Administrator. There are more and more projects that require Sylvia to be out of the office, and we don't just need somebody there answering phones, we need somebody there who's actually answering questions, handling issues, directing people to the right agencies and such, you know, able to retrieve the files. Someone who does more. As part of our job description, one of the things we're changing is the minimum education. I mean, we need somebody who has a stronger background in conservation, has a higher level degree, knows the Wetland Protection Act, certified in that. So this is something that, you know, we're, we're still passionate about, and we really believe that we need someone who has a little bit more experience. And, and, you know, some of the things I listed in, and again, this is kind of related to the hours, too, and just what's going on in our office. Again, the needs of the town have changed. We have so many more development projects. You know, we had this nor'easter.
Do you have the red line document?
They don't. Well.
We do. We don't have the color, but we have.
But you can see what's colored and what isn't.
No, they can't. They can't. I have one.
You do?
I have four copies.
That would be great.
Just, yeah, we kind of did it this way to indicate what we added, to be a little... I have another one if someone needs one.
I don't need one because I, I realized that I had no understanding at all of what I had, so I asked for one. Because I realized, yeah.
We, this, this job description, I guess I don't have one now. That's okay. Was put together basically after really taking a really good, hard look at what my assistant actually does. This isn't made up. This is what she does. And we met with the Personnel Board and the, George Mansfield, the planning, Town Planner was there, and Linda Fantasia, the Board of Health Agent, was there, and they both supported, well, on record, who supported this idea of changing the Administrative Assistant to the Assistant to the Administrator. And, and Tim has been very helpful, too, in coming up with, with this job description.
So how many hours is this person?
It would be 35.
She currently works, and what that is, is 27, yeah, 27 hours from the general budget.
Oh, and so this is also the person you want to add the hours?
Yes, yes, yes.
Got it.
And I, my other question is, does this trigger having to advertise and interview, post an interview for the position, because it's a change in position?
I, I don't think that it does. I think it more accurately reflects the duties and responsibilities of, of the position. The title, the title is different, but it's not, it's not so different that you consider it a new position? I know last year, we had a situation where it, it was so, changed so much that, that the Personnel Board said, this is really a new position.
Could you just verify that so that we don't?
Oh, yeah. With them, right.
We're not asking for two grades. We're asking for one grade change to six.
And what's, so at 30 hours, what's the budget differential for the grade change?
I, I don't know what the, I don't have the rate chart right in front of me now. I'm, yeah, I wouldn't, I couldn't estimate it without seeing the chart on that. And again, the grade is, I mean, it's, it's one thing to request a grade, or, you know, or two, or, it's really what the Personnel Board determines it to be. It's not as if you can go in and say, give me a, you know.
Right. I'm just saying, if we say, yeah, let's go with this, what's the impact on the budget?
Mm-hmm. It goes to a...
We have to figure that one out, I guess. Yeah, yeah. Again, it, this is what she does. She has an associate's?
She has a certificate of learning.
She has what?
Certificate of learning, higher learning.
So she meets these requirements?
Because of the experience. She has, you know, 15 years' experience in conservation office.
Well, because under educate and experience, it requires an associate's degree.
Or certificate of higher.
Or certificate of higher learning. Okay.
So if we were to ever have to hire for this position, we definitely want it.
Sure.
And, and she, she brought with her several years of experience in the Science Division at Mass. Audubon, and that has proven to be extremely helpful, very, very helpful, because it has a broader experience beyond just wetlands.
What happens when somebody changes grade? Do they change grade at the same step that they were at?
No, they, when you increase by a grade, you go to step one of the new grade. So that's, that's the convention that has been used here in town.
And as Personnel Director, do you support this, this change?
Well, I, I do, because I think the job description as originally drafted in the study now three, four years ago, didn't capture a lot of the duties and responsibilities. Even something like the minutes for a kind of a quasi-judicial board have to be very specific and very detailed, because they might end up in a, you know, in litigation. So, you know, there were certain parts of this job that are, that are bigger in scope than, than in others, and I think this job description, I think, accurately reflects that, and then some of the things that have been added on, like the deer program in it, and other things.
I understand that you've taken out the requirement that they attend the meetings.
No, it's just put in a different spot. I saw it somewhere. It's in there. She does, I mean, she does go to all the meetings.
She goes to the meetings.
In fact, she's the only...
Black and white.
Yeah. In fact, she's the only Administrative Assistant that does go to...
Intensive conservation.
In fact, she's the only Administrative Assistant that does attend the meetings of the Board.
And would be part of executive session if necessary, too.
How many, how many Administrative Assistants are there in town?
I don't know. Do you?
Maybe, maybe six, six or eight that work for the various Boards, some very part-time hours to, you know, people that work 30 or 35 hours a week. It depends on the Board, I think, and the level of activity for that Board.
I'm not...
In this case, it's a full-time Administrative Assistant, similar to planning or Board of Health, or even this Board.
I guess my question goes to, how many of those could make the same case that they've grown in job over the years, and they're more than an Administrative Assistant, they are now potentially assistants, assistants to the administrators of those functions? I mean, can anybody, every one of those positions claim that?
I don't think so.
Some, some have, but I don't think all could. I mean, I think it depends on the Board, and depends upon what that, that Assistant is, is required to do. So I don't, I don't think, they're not all the same, not in my mind. There are some Boards that, you know, really need...
You're not saying that the person that currently holds the position doesn't qualify for this new position. You're saying that this person is eminently qualified for the new position as well?
Yes.
Yes.
This person is doing that position.
And she's doing the work.
Right. It's important to remember that when you're crafting a job description, you're not, you're not writing it for an individual, you're writing it for, if someone walked in off the street, what would we need this person to do? What kind of education experience would a stranger need to do this job? You know, there's a tendency to personalize it, I think, but we're really, you have to kind of, you know, put that to the side and just look at the position.
So there really are two dimensions. There's the hours available to get the job and work done, and then there's the complexity of the work to be done, right?
Mm-hmm.
I must say that when I read the, what you had, what you had presented with your red line document, it pretty much said, you know, things are, as you said, things are changing, but they're always changing, but things are increasing, they always seem to be increasing. I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of justification for your request as I read it. Now, I'm, I'm not, you know, that's, I'm just going by what I read, and not what you're saying and what you've researched.
Did you get the one that, did you get the one that was red? Like, do you see how?
I couldn't, I couldn't see it as red. It was underlined or stricken out or...
No, 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 the, this, it's, it's, they're stricken out, and then there's a lot that's added in red, and you can't tell, when you're reading it in black and white, which part is red and which, and was added, and which part was already there.
Yeah, but I did read the, what has been added, and, and it struck me that most of that said, yes, this is, we're, this is increasing, that's increasing. And as I recall, you know, the Deer Committee and the Bog are the only two new things, and when the Deer Committee came to us and came to the, came to you and said, we need, we need some help, it was, oh, yeah, we can, we can help. I mean, it was readily given. So now, that's all I'm saying. I really can't comment on whether or not this is either one of the complexity or the hours are, are, should be approved, because I'm not that close to it. But all I'm saying is, as I read it, it just seemed like pretty much business as usual.
Okay, so.
So maybe what you're saying is, business as usual isn't correct, isn't the correct way to describe it.
Right. I, I think she has a lot more responsibility than, than when the position was originally created.
And I think we need to give her more responsibility to take some of the load off of Sylvia. So we don't want to ask this person to do a significant amount of tasks that are not in her job description without being properly compensated. I think it's important to understand that we have all these situations that keep coming up that require Sylvia to be out of the office. For example, we had that nor'easter last March. All of a sudden, we had four construction projects in town that busted through their siltation barriers. We have chocolate milk mud running down the streets, homeowners calling. These are the situations that we can't plan for, that this just comes up, Sylvia needs to be out of the office, and we need someone in the office to manage all of these other filings that we have that are under deadlines by state regulation. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough amount of work to juggle, and I think it's important to make sure we have somebody that is qualified, capable, and can handle more responsibility as the town grows and as our needs grow, and as we continue to acquire more conservation land that requires management.
Yeah, and even, I mean, I was on the Board four years ago, right? I think. Geez, that long ago. And, and just even in that time, it seems like the, the projects have gotten more and more complex. You know, we used to have a lot of filings be done in a night, and boom, you move on. I mean, you guys have stuff that lasts months now.
And we got a big one coming.
Yeah, and there always seems to be a big one coming. And, you know, especially as buildable lots decrease and as people start to split lots, you know, and people are doing these, you know, conservation clusters, as everything changes and this gets more and more complex, you know, Sylvia's pulled in more and more directions. And, you know, I know, even when I was on the Board, there were times when people would show up at the office, Sylvia would be out, Mary wasn't there, you know, because she was working, I think, 25 hours at that point in time. And it was just, you know, it was hard, because if people would come in, nobody'd be there, then, you know, Sylvia would have to reach out to them after, after work or whatnot. And, and, you know, Mary has actually, you know, once her hours increased, she's actually stepped up to the plate and, and helped out more, and as people come in.
Takes on some of the stuff that I do.
Right. And, and I'm glad to see that the job description is changing. I mean, I think we talked about this a while back as to, you know, how could we change her duties? But ultimately, what's happened, I think, is over the past few years, she's actually done those things, and, and now it's really just, you know, putting it into place that, okay, she has done these things, she's really helped out, you know, she deserves to be compensated and, and recognized for the work that she's doing. You know, I mean, I think 35 hours a week was justified years ago, and, and it's only, you know, going to continue. I mean, because we do, we acquire more conservation land, which requires more monitoring, we have more conservation restrictions, I mean, you know, it's just, more and more stuff comes in, and it just adds to the complexity of everything and, and the time that's needed to manage these things. So, yeah, I mean, I think, and, and it's good that it's changing to an Assistant to you as opposed to just an Admin, because it really, it more represents what Mary is doing than.
Some towns, some towns changed my title to Conservation Director or something along that.
Yeah, they, yeah, I know, because we looked at this, and, yeah, like, Concorde's got a different name. They've all got a little different title.
Concorde has how many full-time assistants? I mean, granted, they're different, but, yes.
Three full-time, yes. I'm sympathetic, there's no question, but, and I, and I understand that there's another department that's recently rejiggered their functions and titles last year of their staff. But what I'm worried about is disorganized function creep in our, in our offices. And I was set to come tonight and propose a moratorium on all changes until we get a consultant in to look at our new and expanding needs, because I do think we do have, we have, our, our current town operations need efficiencies, which they need to plan for future expansion, they need to, some of them, the functions, I think, should be consolidated. And maybe we need an alternate organization in general, and I don't think we are prepared to, to study that and propose a plan. I mean, we, I think we could certainly do a stopgap to help ConsCom, but I, I don't see it as, I, I'm worried that this is just like the tip of the iceberg, and that we're just going to be chasing these problems, and we're not going to have a really good solution. We're going to Band-Aid everything, and then we're going to end up with, like, the house that Jack built, and nothing's going to work.
Okay, so, it sounded to me like you would like, you would like us to consider doing something that's looking longer term.
Yes.
But that, while you were thinking about proposing a moratorium, perhaps you're not doing that now for this particular role.
Well, because I'm very sympathetic to this role, and I understand the needs, so I don't want to say no to you, but I think that we need to do something way more longer term.
Right, so I think, I think for that, you know, we should, we should meet with the Personnel Board and, and talk through what we might want to do if, if we choose to do that.
Yeah.
And, but, but for this particular thing, for, for me personally, you know, I'm not opposed to it, but, you know, I can't say yes until I know how much it's going to cost. And so that, that's just a critical piece of information, is how much is it going to cost for the grade change, and then how much additional would it also cost for the next piece that you're, that...
The hours.
The hours. Just, you know, just to be fiscally responsible, I can't, I can't sit here and say, yes, we're going to take on that project without knowing, with that position or whatever, without knowing the cost.
I understood that FinCom has already put in the extra five hours.
It's at a 35 for...
We're still going to be talking to FinCom about that, and they're going to be asking our, our input.
I understand, but I'm just saying that...
So, you know, the process is, it comes to the Board of Selectmen, and we say, yes, we support the role in general without really knowing how much it is yet. Then it goes to Personnel Board, and then it should come back to us so that we know how much it's going to cost, and we can say, yeah, we would support it or not, and then it would go to FinCom. And so, you know, the Personnel Board, you know, doesn't, doesn't decide if the hours And so, you know, the Personnel Board, you know, doesn't, doesn't decide if the hours are needed, but they decide is, is the grade appropriate for the job description. Whether the hours are needed is just, is the discussion that we would have, and, you know, and a lot of trust in the committee saying, yes, we need the hours, right? You know, so, so in general, I support it, but I can't say yes without knowing the cost impact. It sounds like we need to talk anyway about the hours again.
So, what is our next step?
I can get to the board what the fiscal impact would be of the, the hours by themselves, and then the hours with the, with the step, the grade change.
Right, okay.
I'll have that for you tomorrow.
And then we can, and we can chat about it in our next Selectmen meeting, because it's already in FinCom's budget.
Right.
And then, so maybe we could just chat in the next meeting for 15 minutes, and we'll put it early so you don't have to hang out.
Okay. So, Tim will get us some information as far as the budget impact of our requests.
I was only saying my opinion, but let's get the sense from Carrie.
Oh, aren't you, Chair?
Carrie, your sense, sense from you?
Well, I, I can't, as I say, I can't comment on the hours and the validity of that, because I'm just not, I don't know. I think if the Personnel Board has looked at the job description, and if they feel that that's appropriate, then they're in a better position to, to, you know, weigh in on that, and I would have to agree with their assessment.
Okay. Kate?
Yeah. They've done.
I think waiting two weeks is not going to do things one way or the other, we can do all that all at the same time.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if the majority of the board were going to go against it, and why?
No, I don't, I don't see that. There's no question that our conservation land has been significantly increasing with time. We keep adding more and more stuff.
Yeah.
At some point, we're going to have to bite the bullet and say, we need to deal with that. And this is maybe an appropriate way to do it, it'd be nice to know what it's going to cost us.
We also have an open space plan that we have to update, which is just beginning to get geared up now, and it's good for the town to have one of those that are current. That's a big project that you will be working on as well, I'm not sure we mentioned that a little earlier. Those come up every seven years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, item, 8 o'clock item, sorry, we're running behind, we were running it a long time, but, citizens petition for 2123 Bedford Road. Is Eric here? All right, I can discuss that then. He knew it was on the agenda?
Yes, he did, yeah, yeah.
All right, so if you could just let him know, we could put it on next time if he's interested in it. Is anybody else here? Ask if anybody, is anybody here for that item? The citizen petition. Okay, so now, we are going to move on to the, I'm not going to do that yet. Could you, want to just do a couple things on the town administrator's report?
Sure.
First item in that report, the suggestion of the board that with the complete streets grant that the state awarded to us in December, and actually finally told us today we can talk about it, because there was an announcement next week, and they were very concerned that we, I don't know who they thought we would tell, besides the townspeople, that $250,000 is real money, and that I think, rather than have a working group dealing with that, we probably should have a formal Complete Streets Committee. So, I've listed the people that have been part of that, that working group, I would think that if you want to advertise more broadly for more members, we can, certainly the people that have been involved in it, I think, have an interest in continuing, but I'm just suggesting that we formalize that structure, because it's, it needs to be a real committee, because they'll be recommending on spending, you know, real funds after the improvements are designed, so.
Yeah, so I agree completely, having a formal committee. I think that if we're going to be appointing people to a committee, though, it would be good to have what the charter is, and kind of a little formality around, you know, reporting and check-in times and things like that, and maybe you and I could draft something for the next meeting.
Sure.
I totally agree with you, though, that we should formalize it.
It's a big project.
But, you know, lots, lots of times, you know, you go and you, you try to look for, you know, what's the charter of a committee, or, you know, what do they do, and there isn't anything. And so I'd like us to always have that charter.
Okay. All right, I know that Kate's going to be heading out of town for a few weeks, and she's one of the designated approvers of payroll and bill warrants in the event the board is unable to meet in a quorum. And it was suggested that if we could appoint another board member as a, as a backup, that we would be ensured that someone would be around in the event that the board's not meeting and a warrant needs to be approved.
Alan, are you generally? I was going to nominate Carrie.
Yeah.
That totally solves the problem. We're going to move the town to Florida every winter.
Right, I didn't want to presume too much, but obviously Alan's around a lot during the week.
You're around, you're willing to do it?
Sure.
Is there a motion?
I move that Alan Lewis be appointed assigner, what do we call them?
Approver of.
An approved.
Warrants.
In the event that the Board of Selectmen are not able to.
Yes, and that, there we go.
All right. All those in favor, starting with you, Carrie?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Oscar, aye. Lewis, aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And also attached to the report, you'll find a letter from Malsen, Kristy Kokonhour regarding this year's Old Home Day activities. They're requesting approval from the board for the weekend of June 22nd for this year's Old Home Day celebration, and we've included the usual motion for any use of town facilities, with the understanding that they coordinate with the town's public safety officials, which they always do.
Later, I want to talk to them about where they store their stuff.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Because they're currently in the DPW barn, I'm trying to clear that out. Okay, neither here nor there.
There's a motion here?
I move that the board approve the request of the Old Home Day Committee to use town properties, facilities, and roadways to stage the Old Home Day celebration on the June 22nd weekend, as described in the request of January 14th, 2019, and that they will coordinate their efforts with Carlisle's Public Safety Officials.
Second.
Okay, we're first and second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Carrie?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Oscar, aye. Lewis, aye.
Okay, and we have just two more items here. Keep going.
One more, really.
Okay, there's a request from Chief Fisher to appoint a part-time police officer, Michael Fatou of Hollis, New Hampshire. And his background is described in the memorandum that's attached.
Do we need a motion for that?
To, yes, to appoint.
Okay, okay.
Fatou of Hollis, New Hampshire, as a part-time police officer.
I move we approve the appointment of Michael Fatou of Hollis, New Hampshire, as a part-time police officer in Carlisle.
Second.
Is there an end date to this?
Well, you'll make all the appointments again in June, this is really through, June 30th, and then you'll reappoint everyone then.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to add the date, to, through June 30th, 2019.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is this additive to the budget of the Police Department?
I don't believe so.
I think this is, I, I talked, I talked to John about this, and it is, it is a replacement. Now I'm hesitating, but it is not additive to his budget, no. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Kissinger, aye.
Reed, aye.
Brown, aye.
Oscar, aye. Lewis, aye.
Okay, and then just real quickly on the schedule?
Okay, just briefly, the schedule, at the Finance Committee meeting last night, they deferred on coming in on February 12th, and they would rather come in on the 26th, so we'll have to, I think, actually, I've got it down there twice, so.
Yeah.
The one on the 26th is, is the accurate coordination meeting with the Finance Committee. And also, over the two February meetings, we're going to ask the proponents of all new warrant articles to come in and, and give their best pitch to the board as to why their particular request is ready for this annual town meeting.
No, so we'll be doing that on the 12th and this 26th?
We'll be doing that at the next two meetings.
Right, okay.
And I think it, it helps, I think, sometimes to be able to separate articles that are really ready for town meeting versus ones that are just kind of a notion at this point, or submitted as a placeholder. For that.
We just added ConsCom again.
ConsCom on the 26th.
On the 26th.
Yep.
We will be having a meeting coming up soon for interviews for the fire chiefs. And I'm thinking that that should probably be a separate, special meeting, so that we can just focus on that. It's going to be a long meeting, you know, it's going to be interviewing people. Obviously, we're very interested in everybody's involvement, but I think we'll separate it out from other, other business, and so we'll, we'll pick a different day for that once we hear from the.
The Search Committee, I'll say.
So we'll probably be doing that scheduling offline.
Okay. Tim's got my dates, right?
Yes, that you're.
Okay.
Back to 22nd.
And, not, not in the, the formal town administrator's report, I did circulate to you a proposal from our licensed site professionals, Wilcox and Barton, regarding the, the fuel tank project at, at the fire station. You'll recall that the project was to remove two fuel tanks, which was accomplished, there were traces of petroleum contamination were found in the groundwater at the removal site, which mandated that the town test the public water supply well here at the town hall and at the fire station. Both of those tests were very positive, no contamination was found. Out of an abundance of caution, DEP is now requiring the town to test all private wells within a 500-foot radius of the, of the spill, if you will, where the tanks were removed. So that affects some nine or 10 properties. And Wilcox and Barton submitted a proposal for the board to provide LSP, or Licensed Site Professional Services, to conduct that testing and, and provide the proper documentation to, to DEP. And again, to emphasize that it's out of an abundance of caution, and it's a very conservative approach. Our own wells were tested, and, you know, we, no issues were found with that. They do recommend testing within that 500-foot radius. So the proposal from Wilcox and Barton, I think, was for not to exceed figure $23,000 to conduct that testing, which is an amount of money that we didn't obviously budget for, and would probably require us going to the Finance Committee at some point in time, but it's, it's not an optional thing. It's been very strongly suggested by DEP that the town do this as a matter of due diligence, and I think it's the prudent way to go. It's not inexpensive, but it's something the board, you know, obviously takes seriously, and I think I'd recommend approval of that particular proposal, so that they can begin the public notification. I think I also set the proposed public notice around to the board that, you know, certainly not to alarm folks, but to, again, tell them that it's out of an abundance of caution, that this testing is, is being required, and we don't anticipate any, any particular issues, but it's something that, in order to be complete, we need to do.
So how would they, how would they determine in doing these, the, the well testing, how would they determine if it was contamination, in some of the areas, anyway?
That's a question.
If it was contamination from this tank, or the old MBTE contamination from what was it?
That is, that's, yeah, that, that's a question that, that we've asked, and I'm not sure exactly of the science of how they, they can determine if and when it happened, and if it is related to this or not, but I presume that.
It's all material breaks down all the time.
Tony.
Mariano?
Mariano was at one of the meetings, and he was saying he was pretty sure it was not from Dazies because of the, the way the fissures go, you know.
Yeah, no, I wasn't. I wasn't worried that it was, I was worried more that if we do testing out there and there's anything found in the wells, that that might be attributed to this, when it's actually not.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You can't really, but they are going to do test cores, cores around as well, and, you know.
It's not just well water.
Not just well running, there's, there's solid test cores that are going to be tested. So, and the other thing that I wanted to say, a message that I have for you from the Municipal Facilities Committee, is to please, please, please authorize sending the notification letter to the people that have the wells with, and it's not the properties within 500 feet, I want to specify that, it's the wells within 500 feet. So there may be, you know, there's a difference between in a butters list, whose property's a but, the fire department but, property, and those that have wells within a 500-foot diameter from the, the site where the tanks were taken out. And, but, the major thing is, we would like to get that notification out to those folks ASAP, because we don't want people to be told later that, oh gee, we might have a problem, and they can come back to us and say, well, gee, how come you didn't tell us that sooner? Here, we've been drinking this, you knew three weeks ago, and we've been still drinking the water. We really don't think there's a problem, because there was actually something found at the, the fire department water, but it was less, way less than the acceptable level of.
Why are they doing the borings? I mean, the first test would be to do your water, and then?
Because we have been asked to do so by the DEP.
Did they specifically ask for?
In an abundance of caution. Because they also saw that, you know, didn't seem.
That doesn't make any sense.
And, and the other problem, by the way, with this is that, because we've gone down, started down this road, even if we find nothing in all the wells around, we may be testing for the next five years.
Yeah, well, that's, that's just it.
But that's, we have to do this.
Did we get the original letter from DEP? Did we get a copy of that?
And I don't.
I mean, we need the Board of Selectmen.
No, I think, I think it went to the Board of Health.
Board of Health got it.
Yes.
Did they get multiple quotes?
Multiple quotes.
Are they testing? Yeah.
Well, they, they, they did not, because Barton and Wilcox, and Wilcox and Barton, they're, they were the engineers on the project, so they.
That just seems steep. I mean, the, the testing for the, the water, the eight samples, 2,400 bucks, you know, I mean, that, that's what those cost. It's, it's an expensive test. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, it just, it seems.
The thing that makes it expensive is that, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's the test wells, which.
Oh, no, the test wells. No, that's not.
Well, it's like 10 grand of the whole thing. I mean, we, we need to test the wells, I, you know, I think that makes perfect sense.
Yeah. That was about $2,400, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, it says eight, so it must be eight wells.
Eight wells, that are, eight or nine.
Eight samples and 300 bucks, that's actually not too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy.
Yeah.
And then 1,600 bucks for somebody to go, psh, but, well, no, that's literally what it is.
Yeah, I know it is, but the thing is, it has to be the right somebody, because there's.
Well, it really doesn't, I mean, because it's not biological, you're testing for chemicals, they're not going to contaminate it. But, but anyway, but it's more so, I think we should get another couple of quotes, and I'd like to see the letter, too. I mean.
DEP?
Yeah, if we could, I mean, boring is just.
One concern that I had was that the letter that they had planned to send to the eight people who were within the 500-foot radius, said that there's a problem with BTE. Would it be something TE? One of them might get the.
MBTE, MBTE.
TE. All that will do is raise questions on those eight people, is what is it? What's, what's the, you know, how bad is it? I, I think it might, you know, raise more questions than necessary, potentially, and I think we need to, to know how that would be answered or addressed in any notification, so that we'd minimize the angst, if you will.
Yeah, well, we could have a meeting, I mean, the Board of Health could hold a meeting and have everybody in. I mean, I think that'd be the quickest way to do it, you have a professional here that would state what they're testing for, why they're testing. You have a professional here that would state what they're testing for, why they're testing for.
It's been referred to the board of health and the water quality committee, or subcommittee.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And they're the ones that are basically handling this.
Okay, yeah, they might be even better.
So I, I would like to propose that we split this out, that, you know, I think, I think it would be good to read the letter. I think that, you know, it, it would be good to, you know, maybe get more, more quotes on the boring, but I think that, you know, going ahead with the well testing.
Yeah, I think that we need to do.
You know, and, and getting this letter out.
We have to get the letter. That's job one.
If there, if there may be contaminated wells out there, we should know now.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I, I, I propose that we go ahead and authorize Tim to move forward on the well testing.
Yeah.
And authorizing the board of health to send out the letter.
Yeah, and, and also too, can we find out where the samples are going to be sent for lab?
I thought we had, that was in there.
I think it just says professional service and I don't think it says the actual lab.
I'm not, I'm looking at the letter now, not that. Let me go back to that.
Yeah, what do they say? No.
Okay, so, Tim, you have authorization to contract for the well.
To split the cost out.
Yeah, and to go ahead and contract for that and the board of health can send out the letter.
Okay.
Okay.
We have more questions on the more detailed testing.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, yep, sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Ping ponging from late to early to late to early.
Well, at least we got that out of the way.
Household recycling committee. Who's here from the household recycling committee?
Everybody.
How many, how many, just raise your hand if you're on the committee.
There's three and myself.
Okay, so four, okay. Just so I can get an idea, how many are here because they're, they want to listen to the household recycling committee report? Okay, all right, great, thank you. Take it away.
All right. My name's Rob Perry, I'm the chairman of the Carlisle House, Carlisle Household Recycling Committee. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, well, just so people know, we had, we had submitted a solid waste report to the selectmen and, which we'll be discussing tonight. I just wanted to do a brief acknowledgement of some of the folks who had helped out with generating that over the past year. Of course, the committee members, Dan Scolton and Bob Wallhagen who are here tonight and also Lana Zamaro, who did most of the editing and re-editing and re-editing. Much thanks to her for that. And also, we had assistance from John Height and Kirsty Pecky from the Zero Waste Project Director and Senior Fellow of the Conservation Law Foundation. Also Carolyn Dan and Julia Green. Carolyn Dan was the, who are the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Municipal Assistance and Waste Reduction Coordinator for our region. Carolyn Dan was the former one and Julia Green is the current one and from DEP and she's here, actually here tonight. And also we had assistance from Deborah Bentley from the Energy Task Force and also from Claude Von Roskin, a former member of the Energy Task Force, who helped us gather information and statistics and helped us put together our slide presentation. So much thanks to all those people who helped us out. I also like to thank the residents of Carlisle who, as it says in our report, have been doing the right thing at the transfer station for quite a while now. Transfer station has enabled the town to easily and conveniently take care of their trash and their recyclables and particularly want to thank Gary Davis and his staff who just do a great job of operating the transfer station and the great job we've been doing so far. The reason we're here tonight is we've reached a plateau or a ceiling or however you want to look at it, but for many years now, actually decades, the amount of our solid waste and our recyclable, amount of recyclables hasn't changed a lot. It takes a lot of effort on the part of the residents to put in place the concept of reduce and reuse and recycling and composting and we appreciate all their efforts, but in order to make substantial improvements, we, we need to consider making some changes to our system that can enable us to do that a lot better. We're looking forward to working with you folks, the selectmen and Gary Davis at the DPW and his staff to hopefully implement some changes over the coming months as we work these things out. And as you'll see in the slide presentation that we're, we're going to present, we want to propose some, some changes to significantly improve our trash and recycling situation We have Julia Green from the DEP, our regional recycling coordinator with us. She's just going to share DEP's perspective for a couple of minutes with you and then Claude Von Roskin is going to go through the slide presentation.
Thank you.
Should I come up here? Yeah, you have to because we're. I didn't know I was going to speak, but.
Surprise.
So I'm a municipal assistance coordinator, I work with the municipal solid waste program for Mass Department of Environmental Protection and it's all about waste reduction. So we hear about recycling, we hear about composting, we hear about all our waste bins, but it's all got to do with waste reduction, waste reduction in the state of Massachusetts. Every 10 years, Mass EP puts out another 10-year master plan. We're behind on the master plan that was written in 2010 and we're coming up and we're actually writing the master plan for 2020. So we have decreased municipal solid waste or solid waste across the state, but not as much as the planning had anticipated in 2010. So in light of that too is we're up against closing landfills. So several have already closed in the past 10 years and four more will close by 2021. Also, in the 2020 master plan, they're projecting that we will be exporting more waste to other states because we just don't have the capacity in Massachusetts. And that will either be landfilled or be incinerated at a waste to energy plant outside of the state of Massachusetts. So I tell you all of this because the state of Massachusetts hires people like me, there are eight of us in the state of Massachusetts to work with several cities and towns, I have 36 cities and towns on waste reduction. So, so the state wants to see that and wants to see every city and town putting forward plans and then trying to meet those goals too on waste reduction. So that's all I wanted to say is kind of to give the broad overview of what's happening and how, how Carlisle interacts with the state and vice versa. So, thank you.
Claude, is this the same presentation that you emailed to us?
Yeah, with a very minor change.
Okay.
I had a conversation with Gary Davis this morning and he had looked it over and had some inputs, so I changed a little thing, I'll highlight those. So I want to talk about solid waste and I'd like to hear. Oh, yes, yes, of course. Forgot the microphone. Okay, I'll, I'll try to stay on mic. So I want to talk about solid waste, not about recycling. So this is a conversation focused on the trash part, not the other part. So.
I don't want to run over the.
As Julia said, landfills are closing. There were 900 in 1920, there's only 20 today, you know, there, more are closing and only, Carlisle's closed in 1972. But people say, well, wait a minute, we don't need landfills, we burn our trash. Well, there's a 10 to 1 reduction that you get by burning it, but our 2,000 tons end up still being 200 tons of ash, which is rather nastier than the original stuff, although it weighs less and it's smaller volume. So as you can see, the state managed to reduce over the last, over this 10-year plan, this is older data, so it's from 2016, the state reduced things by 14%. In that same time period, we only went down 3%. But, you know, people ask, don't we do a good job of recycling? Well, yes, we're 37th in the state in terms of our amount that we recycle per household. So, you know, that's pretty good.
300? It says right there, sorry. 283.
283 towns that are reporting, there are 351 towns in Massachusetts, so we don't have data for all the towns. This is the official state data. How do we compare in solid waste tonnage though? That's sort of the other half of the equation. And Carlisle's all the way there on the right, this is tons per household served by the particular service these towns have. Some of them are curbside, some of them are transfer stations and you can see we're at the higher end of the spectrum. As a matter of fact, if you rank all the towns that report, we're fifth in terms of tonnage per person, per household, I should say. So we're maybe not so good in that area. So how do towns get lower numbers than what we've got? Well, the sort of best practices is something called pay as you throw. And it's basically a system where the users have to pay for what they use. And it's implemented often with a special kind of bag that you buy and in order to throw away your stuff at the transfer station, you have to put your trash in that bag. And in Littleton, they do this, in Bolton, they do this, in Acton, they do this, and you go to Market Basket or in our case perhaps Ferns and you buy these bags, they come in 33-gallon sizes, which is your typical trash can, 15 and 8-gallon. So you can, and the price varies accordingly. And pay as you throw is sort of an interdependent comprehensive solution in the sense that you get benefits by reducing the solid waste tonnage that can enable you to do other things and all the pieces work together and it's hard to sort of take just one aspect of this and implement it piecemeal. So now this is, what I'm talking about here is a proposal, right? This is not, we're not here to say, okay, the, this is the plan, we're going, it's going to, we're going to do it in April, April 1st, you know, April Fool's Day, we're going to change everything. So, so this is, this is the first part of a conversation that's going to start and we're going to get community input. And so this is a proposal based on what we've observed as best practices, visiting transfer stations in Littleton, in Bolton, in Lincoln, in Acton and gathering data about other towns that do curbside and so on and so forth. So, but it's still just an initial proposal. So, you know, what we could do at our transfer stations, we could buy a booth like this, we can put a computer in it, this is typically what the other towns do, and then you, you actually buy your, or the, well, you acquire, in our case, we're thinking of a zero-cost transfer station sticker, so the sticker would come down from $25 to zero. You would get 20 free bags, 20 33-gallon bags, 40, depending on what you prefer, 40, 15-gallon bags or 88-gallon bags, not any combination of those, but you have three choices. And, and a free transfer station sticker. And then you'd have a nice booth where you could get those transfer station sticker and the voucher to get your free bags at Ferns. The bags, additional bags you would be buying at Ferns as well, not at the transfer station. We would also have a composting program. 30% of solid waste is, in many households, is the, that don't do composting is the actual food that you throw in the trash. And if you compost that, you can get rid of 30% of your solid waste right off the bat. So we would have bins at, this is done in Acton, there's a picture of how it's done, and you can put your food waste, including meat and bones, so pretty much everything would be able to go into those bins. And you wouldn't have to use these bags for that. You could use any container you'd like, dump it in there. So how does this benefit me? Well, you know, you have a free transfer station sticker, less congestion at the transfer station, we're talking about commingling steel, aluminum and plastic into a compactor so that your unloading would be easier, instead of having to reach up and push your plastic up high and get it into a bin, you could put it down low like the way you do your trash. The property tax burden would be reduced 120K the first year and then 150K annually thereafter. This is a combination of the savings from having less tipping fees and transportation fees, but also the bag revenue would bring in, would bring in those savings. And so one of the big questions that people ask is, well, what happens to all this waste that supposedly disappears when you go to pay as you throw? And there's no definitive answer in the sense that, well, we know 12% disappears because of this and so on and so forth, but this is a slide that talks about the different ways that people end up reducing their contribution to solid waste. And, you know, composting is a big one, certainly, but there are other alternatives like repair and reuse, donations to charity. Recycling does go up with pay as you throw, so that's another aspect of it, but the tonnage that you see in the recycling is not equal to the reduction in, it's less than the reduction in the solid waste. So there are other things going on. And then the swap shed is one sort of difficult item in a pay as you throw environment and towns deal with it in different ways. In Littleton, you can still put stuff in the swap shed, but you're not allowed to put in certain items that you would have to pay for. We haven't talked about the bulk items yet, which I believe are on this slide here. So what if it doesn't fit in a trash bag? You have a list here, this is a typical list, it's from the Littleton transfer station. And so you, depending on what it is, you have to buy a ticket and you buy that ticket at the transfer station, then you're entitled to either drop off your CRT or your propane tank or your tire or your appliance, microwave oven and so on. So the swap shed, in Littleton, you're not allowed to put these things in the swap shed or you can, but you still have to pay the sticker. If you want to have, if you have a game of Monopoly or books or whatever, you can put that in the swap shed, that's no problem. And then here's a proposed layout. Now, I spoke with Gary Davis and he made some adjustments to this. He, this proposal here talks about using our existing compactors and repurposing one that's now used for trash to do plastic, aluminum and tin. But he wants to have four because he feels he needs two, and I, I think he's right, in visiting other transfer stations, namely Bolton and Littleton, they use two trash compactors and they serve similar amounts, almost identical numbers of households. So we would add a fourth, Gary's proposing adding a fourth compactor here in the area where the tendon plastic is, and then that would become a co-mingle compactor. The other thing Gary mentioned today is that he felt that some of our fees, especially for couches and other bulky furniture, was too high because at $70 a ton, he thought that it was rather inexpensive for us to depose, to dispose of them at the incinerator. But other towns all seem to have these higher prices for couches and things like that and so there must be some reason for it that we should probably look into before we go with Gary's recommendation. And then I think, oh, the other thing that he pointed out was that the swap shed, at the end of the day, they clean it out, but they do recycle everything that can be recycled that's left in the swap shed. So if there's, you know, books there, if there's, you know, plastic things, if there's small appliances that are mostly metal, they put that in the metal recycling and so on and so forth. So only the things that are not recyclable are put in the dumpster. So that was, that was a change from the presentation that we had earlier.
Is it emptied every night, or just one night a week? I thought it was one night a week?
I believe it's every night, but I saw them emptying it after Thursday. On a Friday morning, I was there and they were emptying it. And Thursday's a slow day, so I believe it is every. I'm sure if there's a snow day, or, you know, they're out plowing, that's probably one of the things they drop off the list. But I think they tend to do it every day. So, and then the other thing I think that we're, we need to do is have some regulations. I think the regulations right now are very sparse for the transfer station. And when you go to pay-as-you-throw, I think that you need to sort of spell out certain things. And this is an example set of regulations that Littleton has. You know, I'm sure we can craft our own set modeled on, you know, Littleton, Bolton, Acton. But you definitely want to spell things out. And then I have a bunch of appendices that are there to answer questions, really. I don't want to go through them. But I just, you know, want to open it up and see if anybody has any questions.
Of course, I have a bunch. Hang on one second. I want, I want to let-
Nathan Brown is the chairman, so-
Right, so I want to open it up to the board.
I'm not, I'm not the one who is in charge of the meeting.
So just one question. You said that the proposed regulations were samples from what town?
Littleton. I believe that one is actually from Littleton.
Why, why stickers at the transfer station only?
Well, in, I've talked with the dispatch multiple times, and they seem to be very unhappy about being in charge of selling transfer station stickers. And it seems that that's the practice that other towns use. You know, I, I'm sure, I mean, we can do it any way we want. You know, this is just a proposal, so-
Yeah, I'd just be afraid that that would-
It just seems to be a practice that's-
Reduce the likelihood of getting one, just because it's, you know, you can swing by the police station anytime you're thinking of it, right? And you don't have to wait for the transfer station to be open.
On the other hand, you can go to the swap, to the transfer station with a car loaded with junk that you're gonna throw out and buy your sticker. I mean, because you're gonna be there anyway. So, which you can't do now, because sometimes you go there and you go, "Oh, my stickers."
Yeah, I think it's convenient. The booth, you know, would be set up so that, you know, it's a nice environment, you can walk in, it's not a cave.
Yeah, no, I was reacting more to only.
Not only.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't want to monopolize this. Anybody have any questions, and then I'll jump into them.
I'm curious. How do, how do other places determine households? One of the big, I mean, Carlisle, we're all individual homes. Household's easy. What do you do when you've got apartment houses? Do they, how do they account for that? And I'm just, I'm looking at the solid waste numbers.
Right.
Is one of the reasons we're high, because every household actually gets counted, versus an apartment house where everybody goes in with a commercial dumpster?
Well, those numbers that I showed were households served. So if you look at the numbers from the state, they have a column for total number of households, and then the number of households that are served by whatever program, whether it's a transfer station or curbside recycling. And so I'm talking about solid waste per household served. In our case, it's most households. You know, because, like you say, we don't have a lot of apartment buildings. We do have village court, they have their own dumpster, I believe.
So that doesn't, so apartment houses aren't included in those numbers at all?
Are not included in those numbers.
Okay.
That's correct. Those are just transfer station numbers, divided by the number of people who buy dumb stickers.
Okay.
And presumably, that's the population that is served, quote-unquote, "served" by the transfer station.
Thank you.
So I have a question about the free stickers. Currently, you get your first sticker, and then your second car costs-
$10.
$10. But listen, so I have two cars, I want to have two stickers, right? Am I going to get 40 bags?
No, no, no. No, the bags, I-
Just keep buying cars.
That was kind of more or less my-
People will buy extra cars.
Well, listen, my neighbor has five cars because they've got twins, they've got their two cars, and for some reason they have, you know, an extra one in the driveway. You know, they, that's what I'm asking.
It would be per physical address. So there might be an issue where somebody has two households in one house, but usually then they would have two addresses, A and B, or something like that. But no, the, no, the intention is, it's one set of bags per household. And so if you want to get, you only get one voucher per household.
All right, but you could, could you get two stickers so that you don't have to choose which car you're coming in, you know?
No, no, yeah. There's no reason why. So, for instance, in Acton, they actually have a computer in the little shack, and they have, they use QuickBooks. And, you know, they type it in, so they know the address, the plate number, and so on. So you can do a quick search and see, okay, well, well, that address, we already bought one. Okay, so you're not getting the voucher with this, with that one.
Yeah, you'll get a sticker but not a voucher. Okay, got it.
But you want to get so many bags, anyway.
Well, after that, you can buy more.
Well, Gary's saying that people will try to go in with each car to get-
Game the system.
A voucher for each car. Okay. Game the system.
I'd like to just, I just want to make sure that all the boys select men have a chance to-
Ask questions first.
No, I just want to ask about the staffing levels. Have you, have you checked with Gary about that? And then also, too, you know, just in terms of square footage, you know, I don't know how big the Littleton area is. It just, it seems like half the time you go to the transfer station, there's a guy there, but where, you know? And sometimes they're in a swap shed, sometimes they're moving something around. You know, I just, I wonder if the other towns had issues policing this? You know, I mean, if somebody goes in with one pay-as-you-throw bag kind of on top, and the other, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If somebody's not watching, right?
Right. So part of the proposal would be that we would get a grant from the state, this typically is the case, for six weeks of additional personnel, you know, up to, you know, two extra people. Gary, well, the other towns that do pay-as-you-throw seem to staff with two people whenever they're open. Lincoln, which doesn't do pay-as-you-throw, they have two people on Saturday, and only one person on the one week there they're open. But they're not pay-as-you-throw. So, and, which is kind of our system.
Right.
So I think we would have to increase staffing levels. But we have staffing, staff hours are at 36. And if, I analyzed the other places, and we're actually high in terms of staffing hours, even compared to pay-as-you-throw, because the other, the other transfer stations that do pay-as-you-throw don't have as many hours.
Oh, okay.
We're open nine hours, three days a week. A lot of the other ones, sometimes four hours on one day, and, you know, depending on the day. So we might end up cutting back on some hours, but staffing at two, anytime it's open.
Yeah.
You know? And then your other question was, you had sort of two.
Yeah, no, I mean, that was mainly, it was staffing, yeah, staffing and then just being able to-
Yeah. No, I have a little spreadsheet that shows the different towns and number of people, hours they're open, staff hours, you know?
Yeah, no, I got on this, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, so I have a bunch of questions about the report, which wasn't, wasn't shown here. One of the things, and you said that the report was, was more about the waste. And, and I think that there's a lot of really great things in here. I'm not, I'm not sure that, right now, I'm willing to say I support pay-as-you-throw. But I do think that there's a lot of really great things that we could adopt that are in the, the report that you provided and, and in your presentation. And so, but one thing that kind of jumped out at me in, in the report was the, in talking about the recycled, recyclable materials, you know, there's, there's a total revenue of a lot of these things. And the largest tonnage item that we have is the construction debris. And it's also the one that costs us money, and it costs us a lot of money. And I know that there isn't any real enforcement of anybody paying any money to throw things into the construction debris bin. And so I was just wondering what, what might, you know, did you as a committee look at all at what we might be able to do about that construction debris thing? You know, like, is, you know, should the town be paying for contractors to come in and throw away construction debris, you know, like, you know, professional contractors? You know, I could see it if it's a, you know, I don't know, somebody just demolished a part of their porch or something, it's their own house, you know, providing a place to throw that away at a fee. But the whole town is paying for contractors to go in and throw, and it's, it's expensive. And it is by far our largest number when it comes to the waste that we're getting rid of.
Yeah. Well, let me just say that Lana was the primary person who generated the report, so I don't want to take any credit for that. So, but I helped edit it, you know, or I contributed a little bit to it. I could say that the other towns all seem to basically ban any construction waste, that, not taking construction waste. That seems to be a best practice. And so, yeah, you're right. I think that would be a big first step in reducing our numbers. And there are alternatives for small projects, like you mentioned about a porch. There's these bagsters, they're called. It's a, it's a big canvas bag you buy at a hardware store for small money, well, $20, $30. And then you buy a coupon for the pickup later. And, you know, when you're ready, you call up and they, they come and just take it away. And it's very easy to manage because it's just a piece of canvas. So I think we would direct people to that kind of service. And for contractors, you know, they should probably be buying dumpsters. And, and, you know, that's what most-
And just to be clear, that's not reducing the waste. Obviously, there's still, there's still waste. But it, but it is getting the town out of the business of paying to get rid of that waste.
Well, also, there's, you're also putting an incentive on the person who is generating the waste to generate less. They might think about recycling some of it in a way. In other words, if, if you have free ability to get rid of construction debris, then you're not going to be as careful as if you have to pay for it.
Right, right. So that was just, that was one thing that kind of jumped out at me was, you know, making sure that in some way we, we address that. And then, you know, the other thing that, that I really liked about this, and, you know, understand, like, the amount that's charged, maybe, you know, we need to talk about more. But I like the idea of, you know, starting to pay for the larger items, you know? And even if it goes in the swap shed, right? Because if, I think that right now, a lot of garbage goes in the swap shed. And, you know, it's really, I think it, you know, makes people feel better, I guess. But, you know, it, it doesn't work, you know, why is it in the swap shed? And I think that, you know, the idea of if you're, if you're dropping off a refrigerator, which I need to do soon, if you're, if you're dropping off a refrigerator, or propane tanks, or tires, or something like that, I think there should be a fee for that. And I, you know, I don't know how, you know, how we involve Gary's team to, to collect that fee. But I do think that that would drive some things down. You know, my guess is, is that we get things from outside of town just because it's free here, right? "Oh, I can drop it off at my transfer station." And, and so, so I, I like that aspect of what you're doing. And so what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is see is, are there things that can really help us reduce our waste, going, stopping short of pay at your, pay-as-you-throw, and see how well we do, and then do something that's more complicated, like the, the pay-as-you-throw? You know, I think that when you first come into town, I think, I think I've got it down now, but it's hard to know where to throw what. Right? And I think there could be so much better signage. And, you know, so if, if you know, "Oh, over there, I can throw away metal things," well, now, now maybe you're gonna walk over there and throw it over there, rather than throw it in the garbage one, because you didn't see, you know, you know where plastics are, you know where glass is. Where's the metal one? You know, kind of, it's actually one of those dumpsters that's over in the corner that looks like it's sitting there waiting to be put into the middle when the other one fills. And so I think there could be so much better signage and, and just education around it. I think that people in Carlisle really want to do the right thing. And then-
Hi.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think Gary was very enthusiastic about the notion of charging for the sort of bulky items, the one, you know, which end up costing him, like tires, you know, TVs, those are two big ones, and so on. But one thing that is tricky is that you do, I think, have to staff up. Like you said, if you have only one person, it's hard for them to keep track of, "Oh, where's that TV?" You know, "I have to also manage this dumpster over here." And now we're adding personnel, and we will get presumably an income stream from, you know, selling the vouchers for these items. But I don't know if it's enough to offset the thing. That's why, in some sense, the pay-as-you-throw system is a little bit somewhat of an all-or-nothing approach, because it's, it's hard to get the staffing up without the financial benefit that you get from, you know, the bags. So that's something that's tricky. And from what I've seen, the other towns tend to do it all. Tim, in Littleton, did they implement it in a phased way, or did they-
Pay-as-you-throw?
Pay-as-you-throw.
No, it was kind of, one day it was pay-as-you-throw.
I totally get that. And I think that there's, there are, there are things that we could try to do. I mean, we'd have to run the numbers, right?
Yes.
There are things that we could try to do as far as, you know, maybe, maybe people would be willing to pay a little bit more for that dump sticker if it meant that they didn't have to go through, you know, the, the garbage bag, pay-as-you-throw thing. And, you know, I do think that, you know, we would get, you know, we would certainly get more revenue by doing propane tanks and tires and, and things like that. So I guess just, you know, I think this is a great report. But I, you know, I, I'm just wondering if there can be some kind of a, of a middle ground where there's more signage, more, more education for people about how to do it. And, and, and the signage in a way that, you know, encourages people to do it. Like, you know, if, if, you know, a lot of restaurants you go to now, you know, you, it's kind of like, you know, it says, "Oh, glass, recycle glass here," or, you know, "Compost here," or "Landfill," right? You know, it's, it's like, "Oh, wait, maybe I better separate these things out because, you know, of the landfill." I, I do like the idea of encouraging composting, to get that number, you know, get that weight down. I think that people, you know, people might, you know, my across-the-street neighbor pays a monthly fee to compost, you know, they come up and they come with a bucket and, you know, so I think that people would compost. I do like the idea of the larger items, even if it goes in the swap shed. And then somehow dealing with that contractor
Yeah. My initial meeting with Gary, he was definitely wanted to do a phased approach. But I think that, from what I've seen at the other towns, and, because there's also an educational component to this. And so if you have a kind of piecemeal approach, it might, I think it's a little bit harder to keep up a program of saying, "Okay, well, you know, it's going to change like this, and then it's going to change like this," and, you know-
See, I'm not talking phased. What I'm, what I'm talking about is, let's make improvements and see if we can get there and how far we can get without doing the pay-as-you-throw.
Yeah.
And then evaluate it in a year or two and see, "Oh, well, do we really, you know, maybe we do have to do the pay-as-you-throw because we didn't reduce our waste to the level where we wanted to."
I guess I'm not at all in agreement with you. I say you do the Band-Aid approach because what you're talking about ain't going to work. And it won't work because it doesn't have the incentive. And the incentive is, you are sort of rationed as to how much the town will support you're throwing out. If you want to waste that, or waste more, or not do it, then it's going to cost you, and that's what the incentive is.
I disagree there, because we're number 37 in recycling. I don't, I don't think that-
Yeah, but we need more incentive yet. And the sticker is free, the bags are free to a certain number. And then after that, if you're going to do more than that, you pay for it. It's not, it's, in a way, pay-as-you-throw is almost a misnomer, misnomer. Because we're talking about paying as you throw the big items, really. We're not talking about pay as you throw your trash.
But the, the-
That would, that would support my argument.
Yeah, but doing, paying for things like tires and propane tanks and TVs doesn't reduce solid waste.
No.
It just, it just, you just charge, you pay for it now, that's all.
Right.
It goes somewhere else.
Right.
Go ahead, you have-
I just stepped up as a member of the recycling committee because Lana's a Marrow on the recycling committee. A point of confusion, I think, is the construction and demolition debris. That is not part, what is, what gets counted as part of household trash is what goes into the incinerator. The CND is diverted to devens, where it is handled, okay? So I think it's important to be clear about what the household tonnage is. And we didn't, And we didn't, in the slide deck, we didn't show the map of how we look compared to all the other towns. It's bright red, we've gone up to a brighter red of color, which is a higher level of tonnage, not a huge number, because we were close to that anyway. But I think that what Kate, Kate's point is that there, what has been shown to work in community after community, one hundred and forty-seven, to be exact, at this point, is that incentive program, because people pay closer attention to what they're throwing out. It's, it's a pretty simple calculation from that point of view. The other aspect around pay as you throw is it's a, it's a form of monitoring, frankly, because the bags are very distinctive for the town, and, yeah, you could bury some bags, I guess, under a bag, but it gets harder to, to kind of cheat, basically. So it would be a way of monitoring who's actually using our transfer station and throwing their trash there, because they'd have to have a bag in order to be able to do that. So I think those are some of the reasons why a pay as you throw system is very effective.
So Gary, do you have any comments?
Well, Claude and I have had a sort of a exchange of ideas and views and data over the last couple of days. And Claude, would you mind if I shared those emails with my fellow selectmen?
No, please, please.
Okay, why don't I just do that, rather than take the time here? But I'll send a copy of the email to Jen, and she can distribute it, so you can take a look at my comments.
She's nodding okay.
There are two dimensions to this, one is cost to the town, the other is reduction of waste, of solid waste materials. And we can get to both of those in a couple of different ways, I think, and I think Claude may agree with that. But it's just a strategy of what the town will willingly accept, because it does represent a change in the way we're doing things, no matter what we do, you know? To get to those two objectives of cost and reduction of solid waste.
Yeah. Without the pay as you throw, for instance, what's my incentive to use the black earth bins? Right, you know?
What's your incentive to put your plastic in the plastic bin right now?
There is no incentive.
Exactly.
Yeah, and sometimes I, if I don't really feel like rinsing it out, I don't.
There's our problem.
It's televised, you know?
I know it.
There's two or three people watching.
You know, the greasier it is, or if it's smeared with peanut butter.
Peanut butter's a tough...
You know, if I don't feel like putting it in the dishwasher this time, I might just throw it out. Whereas if I were, if I have a certain amount of volume that I can now throw out, I'll be way more careful about it.
Yeah, this proposal, basically, in the big picture, it divides the cost of the transfer station into two pieces. Normally, it's pretty much a hundred percent paid for out of property taxes. There's a nominal cost of the dump sticker. But the new approach is to say, okay, the town will pay for half of it, but you're going to pay the other half of it. But most importantly, not as one lump sum, like by buying a hundred and twenty-five-dollar dump sticker. We're saying, you're going to pay for it, you know, on a per-bag basis, because that creates the incentive. And you're right, people do recycle now, but you do see an increase in the amount of recycling when you go to pay as you throw. So there's a population there that is going to behave differently as a result of this incentive, and that's the, the sort of magic of the scheme. And the other thing is that it's not just recycling, because there are other alternatives, like composting, as Kate pointed out, there, people will be composting who wouldn't otherwise do that. And there's, you know, well, let's not take that couch to the transfer station, let's take it over to Acton where they do the home goods, I think it's called.
Yeah.
Kate's going to be putting all her compost in, compost in the metal cans.
I will.
So I just want to, I just wanted to open it up, because, you know, we're running late, I just wanted to ask anybody. So we are, I think, going to have to discuss this at another board of selectmen meeting, because we've run out of time, but I'll just take a couple of questions, because there have been people putting up their hands, and I haven't been acknowledging them. So I think, sir, you put up your hand first a while ago.
Okay, I just had a quick question. It sounds to me like there's no point putting something in the swap shed at four fifty-five on Saturday.
Okay.
Oh, I'm getting, we need you on the microphone, so you have to come up and ask...
Sorry.
You have to come up here.
There's no point.
No, 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 you still have to come to the microphone.
If you could come up and state your name and address, state your name and address.
David Erickson, two thirty-seven Fisk Street. So it sounds to me like there's no point putting anything in the swap shed at four fifty-five on Saturday.
That's correct.
Sounds right. If you really want it to be recycled, go early in the morning. Yes.
Yeah, you have to go up. Oh, sorry.
Bonnie Mishkolcy, four four seven Cross Street, and I've been going to the dump since nineteen sixty-six, so I've seen a lot of things. And one thing, in the dim past, that might solve a little bit of the swap shed problem, people used to be very upset that other people who didn't have dump stickers, or weren't using anything else but the swap shed, were allowed to come in and take things away. But that gets rid of a lot of stuff, so if there was a designated time when anybody from anywhere could come and come to the rich town of Carlisle and pick out stuff from the swap shed, that might, it used to be a problem, but now it could be a solution.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Nancy, you have to go to the microphone.
Nancy Cronenberg, one fifty-two Wolfrock. Have you got any data on what people do when they decide, oh, I don't want to put it in the bag because I paid for the bag, aside from recycling? It makes, I can see it makes them more apt to recycle, but anything else?
Well, I had a slide there with a list of, you know, possible...
Okay, I guess it went by real fast. What were some of the things on there?
Well, you know, the, the home goods, you know, giving stuff away, charitable contributions, you know, some people may use an appliance delivery person, they'll take old appliances, you know, for a fee, so people opt to do that rather than bring it to the transfer station. There's a whole host of composting, you know, it's not clear what exactly all the behaviors are, no, as far as we know, nobody's done a study to sort of actually, like, observe people, as if they were like lab rats and, you know, see what they do. But there's a list of conjectures about what happens. But empirically, there's a lot of evidence, you know, one hundred and forty-seven communities, forty-four percent solid waste reduction when you do pay as you throw.
Okay, Debbie, one last question.
Sorry, Debbie Bentley, Hildred. It's more of a statement, just to remind everybody, this is our carbon footprint issue, and we have twelve years in which to really do something substantial. Reducing our trash makes everybody aware that everything they consume has a carbon footprint, it actually starts to reduce our carbon footprint. So it's actually, we have to consume less, rather than actually worry about our trash. Should we consume less, we naturally have less waste. Lana and I have actually written a website called Zero Waste Carlisle to help people reduce their waste. It's up there as a sort of beta trial, but certainly, somebody can contact me and I can put it on, give them the link.
Okay, all right, I'm going to break it just...
David, David Friedman.
David Friedman Hudson's wrote, three quick things. We've been talking about this solar array at the transfer station, and I think somebody, these two groups should get together, because we should see, you know, you look at the aerial view with nothing in the way, it'd be interesting for, to get together and see how these things can coordinate with each other and figure out how, because you're going to have a different flow with pay as you throw, and you're going to have a different throw with this solar array. And so I think, before you move ahead with either of these things, you need to see how they, they work with each other, that's one. Second thing is, I think, for you to move ahead, you're obviously, as Kerry pointed out, going to need to look at this from a financial standpoint, and I think what they should be asked to do is to talk to Gary and really work out what the staffing is, because clearly, as Luke said, you know, you go there and you don't know where the person is, but you're really going to need multiple people there all the time, because you need somebody in the booth all the time to be able to do the stickers, and you need somebody at the drop-off place for the big things all the time to make sure people are doing what they're doing, and somebody who's watching every one of the things that you can put bags in to make sure only bags are put in. And I think you really need a detailed, you know, ask Gary to really look at this very clearly and lay out what the staff is going to do and understand that. Last thing is, what we can do now, while we talk about it, is make sure in the mosquito, and I think that, you know, Household Recycling Committee, get out that we are fifth in the state in tonnage, in that map that I've seen with the color on it, get that out there, and, you know, let's just shame people a little bit, and maybe people will feel like, let's do better in the meantime, while you work it out.
All right, thank you. All right, so I think, yes.
Cindy Knock, forty-one Canterbury Court. I just wanted to say three things. One is, first time I heard about this, Lana told me about two years ago, about, oh, pay as you throw, pay as, what is it, pay as you throw is the way to go, and, and she explained it all to me, and I was very much against it, and I just thought it was the dumbest thing I ever heard, but, but in the meantime, I've talked to people, and a lot of people that live in pay as you throw communities, and they say, oh, yeah, it's, it's the way to go. So I've changed my mind about it, and now I'm a hundred percent behind it. The other point I want to make is, there was in the, in the report, or in the, in this PowerPoint, you have a thing on, about cameras that are being installed, and I wanted to know what that, how that would work, and is that meant to cut down on the number of people that go in without a sticker on their car, or to monitor them?
Well, the beauty of pay as you throw...
I've heard about people saying that there are people, you know, nobody ever really checks the sticker, like, there's lots of people that go into our transfer station and dump, that don't even live in town, and things like that, so is that what that's for?
Well, so if we do pay as you throw, as I've outlined it, the colored bags would be an enforcement mechanism in and of themselves. You don't really have to worry about if people have a dump sticker or not, because if they're willing to pay, go to Fern's, buy bags, and then throw stuff away, okay, we'll let them, you know, it's not that big a deal. That's the least of our problems.
I'm not sure that that, right, those, those...
Given that other communities are doing the same thing, and, you know, we're not going to be charging...
I think you still have to make sure they have, that they're a Carlisle resident, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is, right now, because we're a small town, and we don't have a high staffing level, I don't think we have very good compliance with dump stickers. I did a little study and discovered four out of thirty-one, or five out of thirty-one vehicles didn't have dump stickers, one of which wasn't even registered in Carlisle. So, but, you know, we could say, well, let's use a transponder system and, you know, really automate this, but then you're solving this small aspect of things that will automatically get taken care of, for the most part, with...
Right, I just want to, I just want to be clear, because I'm very against saying that people without a dump sticker should come in, because all you're talking about is the garbage that's going into the compactor. You're not talking about the recycling, you're not talking about what's going into the swap shed, you're not talking about the metal waste. You still need to make sure it's a Carlisle resident, and that Carlisle, you know, because it's Carlisle taxes that are dealing with those things. So, you know, I think it's still, they still need to make sure that there's a dump sticker.
Right, I'm saying that, right now, we are an island in a sea of communities that restrict trash. Even the curbside recycling is all restricted, you only, and you have to pay extra if you go beyond the particular container that you have for a household. So we're the only place anywhere around where you, it's an all-you-can-eat buffet where you have an unlimited doggy bag you can take with you. And everybody else is, has clamped down on things. So there's a huge motivation, I would argue, for people to come to Carlisle. If we implement pay as you throw, that motivation pretty much completely disappears.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I'm going to...
Last, just one last tip, that peanut butter in the jar thing, if you have a dog, just give it to them. It keeps them happy.
This discussion, I'm going to invite you back.
Can I just say that our report is on our, on the town website, on the, on the recycling committee page, if people want to see that actual report.
Okay, great, thank you. So, Tim, let's pick another time and make them come back, maybe the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth?
February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, this is the twenty-ninth, not the next one, the one after.
The other twenty-nine, oops, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's also almost single stream, that's the other thing, they didn't really exercise. Right now, we're doing plastics. Yeah, so.
Is the deer committee here?
I saw Dan, Dan Bojanic's in the back row. He said they'd be here. I don't know who, oh, here's Dan right now.
Okay, excuse me. Excuse me, everybody, we're going to move on to the next topic, so if you could please leave or stop talking.
Take your conversations outside.
Okay, our next...
Nancy, starts with a K, I know what it is. This is terrible.
Okay, so the next item is, the deer committee is providing a report to the selectmen. Is the deer committee here? You can come right on up here and sit down.
No, they're here, they're here.
They're walking up. Hey, so if you wouldn't mind just saying your name, and Kerry, you're on the committee too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just introduce yourselves and we'll jump into it.
So I'm Steve Tobin, representing the trails committee.
I'm John Keating, member at large.
Dan Bojanic, the deer agent.
And Kerry. All right.
Kerry's waving.
All right, do you want to go ahead and go through the hunting report for us?
So what we've got here is a five-page document, how would you like us, do you want us to quickly just sort of summarize through the various key points?
Yeah, summarize through it, yeah, the importance, the parts that you think are most important, you want to make sure that you point out to us.
Okay, so maybe, maybe to start off with, just read the executive summary in its entirety, because I think that sets the scene for the rest of the document. So it says here, the Carlisle Deer Hunting Pilot ran from October the first through to November the twenty-fourth. Eighteen hunters hunted on townland, and ten deer were harvested, which is considered a success. There were zero safety incidents. Significant learning was gleaned, which will be used to further improve the program, should it continue. So what we've got in the rest of the document, we start off with a basic introduction and background. I think many of you have actually heard a lot of this from previous meetings. What it, what it does outline is that this was a bow hunting program. The deer committee has been operating for about eighteen months or so, putting together regulations, putting in, putting into effect processes, hunter interviews and so on, and then executing on the hunt. We go into various details about how hunting is performed, the location, the height of the tree stands, the actual regulations imposed by the state, which effectively limit the location of the hunters relative to houses and roads. And what we then describe is how we selected the dates based upon the state mandated dates, plus the feedback we had from town residents. So in summary, we hunted a short season, which was October the first through to November the twenty-fourth. As far as the hunting parcels were concerned, we selected five parcels in total. That represented about two hundred and seventy out of a total of one thousand one hundred acres of town-owned land, so we, we actually only enabled about twenty... So we, uh, we actually only enabled about 25% of town-owned lands to be hunted and that was shared by 18 hunters. So the five parcels in question were Benfield, Conantland, the Davis Corridor, Greeno, and the Town Forest. So, um, we have got in the document links to various maps and so on, so you can actually drill down to quite a lot of information. And right at the end of the document, we've got frequently asked questions and various other references as well. So there's a lot of information in this. As far as the hunters were concerned, we went through various selection procedures to select 18 hunters, all had bow hunter education certificates. There were seven residents and 11 non-residents. As far as the deer harvest was concerned, a total of 10 deer were taken, five bucks and five does. One in the Town Forest, one in Benfield, and eight in the Davis Corridor. I actually just got the figures today, but in Carlisle, the total figure was 49 for the whole town. Okay, so we contributed 10 out of the 49, and it's the highest figure that Carlisle has ever achieved in the records that we've got. Previous high being 41. Okay, so I think we made a significant contribution towards the total deer harvest. As far as comparative data is concerned, we looked at Dover, we actually had some figures from them. And when you consider the total number of hunters in Dover compared to the deer taken, we were very, very favorable. We had 18 hunters and 10 deer were taken. For the figures in Dover for 2010, they had 31 hunters with 19 deer taken, and in 2012, there were 58 hunters and 29 deer taken. So like I say, very comparable statistics. Interestingly enough, we actually had a short season. So we only hunted until the 24th of November. Legal hunting was allowed until the 31st of December. So the Dover figures represent a full season's worth of hunting. Okay? So that's basically the summary of, of the deer harvest. And then what we have done in the report is we've basically collated information that we've gleaned, both from personal observations as well as feedback from members of the community and so on. So what we're covering in the latter part of the document is basically items such, in no specific order, these were just basically a catalog, a catalogued list. We covered learnings from the signage, we catalogued two incidents that happened, we catalogued observations such as people mentioning that they saw litter, some feedback on tree stand orientation, one incident of hunter harassment, feedback from trail users, the observation that there was one illegal tree stand found, not on the five parcels, but we took it upon ourselves to actually address that issue as well. There was feedback from members of the public with respect to the timing of tree stand removal, and finally, some feedback and concerns about trail cameras. So we've covered all of these items. Hopefully you've read the report and obviously we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, um, I just had a bunch of questions, surprise, surprise, but, um, on the bottom, I think, of the first page, um, yeah, on the bottom of the first page, it says, incidentally, throughout this period, neither hunters nor members of the public were requested or required to wear orange clothing, which is mandatory for hunters and recommended for the public from November 26th, when the gun season started. What does that mean?
Okay, so when, during the period of bow season, hunters are not required to wear any form of orange clothing. They wear full camouflage, but no orange. And that is because archery is considered, bow hunting is considered a very safe activity and as a result, the hunters themselves can be in full concealment.
Ah, okay.
And it's also a recommenda, it's, it's also not recommended for the public to have to wear orange because again, it's considered a very safe activity. When we move to the use of shotguns and muzzleloaders, which are true firearms, then it's considered much safer for people to wear orange. It's mandatory for hunters to do that, they legally have to wear orange, and it's also recommended for the public to wear orange as well. It's just a matter of common sense.
Okay, it just, the, the way it was written, it looked like it was saying that, uh, we didn't, we didn't have them do it, but it's actually mandatory that they did it. And so that, it just seemed-
It's mandatory for gun season.
It's mandatory after November the 26th.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was just, that just wasn't clear.
Yeah, yeah. So we were just basically trying to clarify the, the issue that, or, you know, people were asking why weren't members of the public being asked to wear orange and why weren't the hunters wearing orange, and we were saying it wasn't necessary.
Okay. And so I guess, you know, some other things that, that I would say is, you know, if the town does vote to, well, we're gonna talk about what the, the vote would be, but I think, I think that, you know, if this does go on in, in future years, it's really important that the, the committee really does address the signage issue. Just make sure that it's very clear, you know, it's, it's silly to have signage be an issue, right? Because it's something that could so easily be fixed. And so I think we really would need to make sure that that was, that was addressed. And, uh, the, um, so the incidents, um, so on section two for the incidents, it says there that, uh, that you're considering a penalty for infringement upon the rules?
Yeah, I mean, what we're, what we basically are, are using, you know, this is a pilot year, so we're using this as a, a learning experience to see what measures do we need to put into place. The one learning obviously we, we've got is that we never actually articulated what penalties would be for infringement. And so that's something the deer committee still has to finalize, but the suggestion has been to actually make it very explicit in any documentation such as applications so that there is no ambiguity whatsoever. So if there is an infringement, the hunter themselves have actually signed something saying that they understand the penalty for a single infringement will be.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that that's important and I just highlighted it as something that would, would be important. And I, I think the, another thing that, you know, just, just, this is just looking through the issues, and I know that you're on it, but, um, the, the tree stand issue, I think, is something we really want to just make sure that we're addressing. I mean, if it's, if it's one of the hunters that got a permit through this committee, I think, I think that's an infringement, right? It gets back to what is the infringement if, if it's oriented wrong? And, uh, you know, so I think that's just something that we need to make sure that we're looking at.
Yeah, I mean, what we've obviously discussed is, there was nothing in the regulations with respect to the tree stand pointing towards the trail. The instructions were not to shoot in the direction of the trail. And when a hunter is actually on their tree stand, they've actually got quite a lot of degrees of freedom of movement, so they could shoot to the left or shoot to the right. So I think making it a bit more explicit would be an easy thing to do. But it's gonna be very difficult in terms of direction because they can actually shoot 300 out of the 360 degrees. So if they turn, they could, theoretically, they could point towards a trail, but I think the important thing here is for them not to shoot at the trail.
It, it's important for them not to shoot at the trail and also if it, they certainly could shoot in any direction, but the tree itself should be not, you know, the stand itself should not be on the trail side of the tree, it should be on, yeah.
And we can, we can implement that as a requirement.
And so the other thing that came up was the cameras, are there any thoughts about?
That's a, that's a difficult one. I mean, we've got obviously divided opinions from within the committee itself. Cameras are pretty important to have, and as far as the state is concerned, they see that as a non-issue. I mean, no town, no entity has a ban on the use of cameras. And, you know, they are, they're, they're very important in order to be able to pattern deer. So from a personal point of view, I see it as a non-issue, but obviously other people feel more strongly about it, so it's a question. If, if we did implement a ban on cameras, we'd be the only town in Massachusetts doing it, and I think-
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that it's necessarily a ban, but, you know, deer, deer can't read, could we put a sign up on the tree, you know, saying, hey, there's a camera here? Just somehow notify that, that there's a camera? You know, where, what, you know-
Or limit where the cameras are, I mean, within certain number of feet of the trail, for instance, since they're gonna be, they're not really, those cameras, I take it, are not on the trails, because that's not who they're interested in looking at, they're interested in off the trail. So I'm assuming those cameras are not looking at the trails, but, um-
Anyway, I think that's something that we would need, need to address a little bit more.
So I think that's, that's a good point. I mean, the cameras are in the shooting area, they're off trail, they're very close to the tree stands, so we could be more explicit in saying, you know, let's keep them-
Within so many feet of the tree stand.
Within that sort of zone and just, you know, make it clear that, you know, cameras shouldn't be around. The only issue, of course, is that before the season starts, the hunters actually use the cameras to try and determine where to put the tree stands.
Where to put the tree stand, yeah.
But most, well, I don't know of any hunters who had actually put a camera on the trail anyway. They would usually try and find game trails and sort of, you know, embedded areas where to put their tree stands. So that's something, again, you know, we can discuss, just how to handle that.
All right, there's all my questions on the report. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, actually, just one quick question, it was something you brought up today. So obviously the 10 that were, um, you know, the town land ones, right, we know where those actually were. The other 39, I mean, I'm assuming it's all private property, right? Does somebody actually have to report where? You know, so for example, like if you got this person with the illegal tree stand, right? I mean, when I was on CONSCOM, they were, they were finding them, not all the time, but every year we'd find one or two. Um, did, when people kill a deer, do they actually have to report where, the actual location where they kill it?
Only the town.
Oh, okay, just only the town. All right, okay.
Yeah, that's too bad, because it would be interesting data-
Well, I mean, from a lot of perspectives, a monitoring perspective, but also too, you know, I mean, the, you know, illegal hunting has been going on in town forever, you know?
Yeah, actually, of those other ones that were killed, were they bow-killed or rifle-killed?
That would be the total for all three.
For all three, so some of those might have been shot at.
Do we know how many of each?
No, um, the, well, the figures that I saw today were that 14,000 deer were killed in Massachusetts last year. There is a breakdown of does versus bucks and so on. There will be a, a breakdown by zone at some point, I haven't seen those figures, but getting the details like Carlisle, you have to go to Mass Wildlife Direct and, and get those figures, and they were kind to send us, because I've been in touch with them. So they've sent us those figures, but those aren't really publicly available as such.
Okay, all right, yeah. So Tim, I have a question for you. Kerry, did you have anything that you wanted to say? I keep forgetting you're on the computer over there.
Well, no, only that I, I think the committee has done an absolutely terrific job of implementing this pilot, and it's unfortunate that we have some folks in town that don't hesitate to cry fire in a crowded theater. And make, a lot of other folks who would normally enjoy the trails and be able to enjoy the trails in town wary of doing so. And it's a very unfortunate aspect of, of this pilot program, this whole thing. A handful of people have basically created more angst than is absolutely, you know, that is warranted by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay. Tim, I have a, a quick question for you, I was looking for it earlier. Which, which regulation is it that permits the Board of Selectmen to allow hunting on town-owned land?
It's in the bylaw, but I think-
Article, it's Article 10.
Article 10? Do we have, do we have that here?
It's like Article 10.1 or something like that.
It's not zoning, it's the general bylaw?
It's in the general bylaws, yeah.
Firearms and explosives? I didn't look there. Okay, yeah, so Article 10, 1 dot 1 states that "No person shall hunt, fire, or discharge any firearms or explosives of any kind within the limits of any highway, park, or other public property except with the written permission of the Board of Selectmen or such other town officer or officers as they may designate from time to time." So, okay, I just wanted to remind, because I know that we had seen this before.
But that's again firearm, it doesn't say anything about-
It says hunt.
Yeah, hunters.
It says hunt, okay.
Yes. Okay, so however, you know, so I, I think it's clear that the Board of Selectmen, by bylaw, we have the right to allow hunting on public property, and it is within our authority to do so. And, you know, but I think that what we're talking about here is asking the town, because we had asked the town before, to look into it, whether or not we should look into it. And so what we're talking about here is going back to the town and saying, hey, what do you think? I mean, I, you know, in, in wording it, this is just my opinion, and I'm opening up to the Board of Selectmen here to talk about, I think, what we're asking the town is not that we're taking away our right to do it, we're just getting a sense from the town, is it okay? You know, not is it okay, but as a follow-up from the previous one, we decided that, you know, we want to do this, because we can't do anything that's kind of counter to the bylaw, right? So in some, some way, we would be wording the warrant article to, you know, I don't know if, is it a non-binding thing, a non-binding warrant article? I'm looking to you, Tim, for-
Well, it, it could be in the form of, as you say, a non-binding resolution. It, you could put another referendum question forward, is the original deer hunting question was, was a ballot question, it wasn't a town. People often say, went to town meeting before, it didn't go to town meeting, it was a ballot question. So that's, that's one way to do it. Council will do, you know, what the board instructs, but, you know, he mentioned there might be a way to make the bylaw more explicit, that, you know, the board does have the authority to, uh-
Well, and it's still, even if-
It's pretty explicit.
Even if we have the authority, if, if the town were to come out generously against it, we might decide that's not a good thing to do then.
Right.
You know, even though we have the authority to do it, we'd say it's not, it's something we shouldn't do.
Absolutely, I just want to make sure in whatever we're doing in an article or a ballot or whatever, a referendum isn't counter to what's in the bylaw. You know, I don't want to create a conflict.
I understand, yep.
So I guess the first question is, you know, I think, I think, you know, if the town were to vote and say, yeah, we should do it, and then the Board of Selectmen were to then say, yes, you know, we do want to continue doing it, I think that there's some work on the deer committee to address a lot of the issues that, that came up. I don't think that's a part of what we're asking the town. We're not gonna be asking the town implementation details. We would just be asking the town, make, you know, in, in some way, we're asking them yea or nay, right? In a way that's not counter to the bylaw.
Right, I agree.
And so you talked to town council and they were saying that that might be either redoing the bylaw, which is a lot of work.
By law or more an article, there would be more of a resolution. Again, you know, the town meeting can't bind the selectmen to a course of action that's counter to the bylaws.
No.
Or, or to the ballot question root again, because that's where the original, you know, vote was taken. Again, a non-binding ballot question. I don't think there's any way that the-
That's the problem with non-binding, anything non-binding, it's, because I think it's ambiguous and then even if, you know, votes, people vote one way and then you do, they forget. I, I think whatever we do, I would rather we did it in a binding, clear way. And I don't know what that is necessarily, but I don't like non-binding.
I think the only, so I think we're, you know, like the other one, we're either asking for a direction, it seems to me, or we're gonna have to, actually, let me, let me just do this and take a step back. What's the sense of the board as far as us asking town meeting yea or nay on hunting on public properties, whether or not we should, where, where, where we have the jurisdiction, whether or not, obviously, we can't say you can't hunt on private property, and that's not what we're asking. We're specifically asking about this pilot program, should we continue the pilot program? Is, what's the sense of going to town meeting versus just continuing it as the Board of Selectmen?
It would give us a sense of the-
It would give us a sense of the democratic purpose of the town meeting, which is to express the will of the town. And if the town comes out overwhelmingly and says, no, we don't want hunting in this town under any circumstances, no bow-hunting on town property, then, as a selectman, I would take that very, very seriously.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, either town meeting or ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care what, what, what form it is, I don't care, but, I mean, there's many concerns expressed, and I see no harm in asking.
Okay.
Well, I think we should ask, too. I mean, but what I, I think, I'm still a little confused as what the question is. So, is the question, you know, it's the presentation, we have this bylaw. Under this bylaw, we have authorized a pilot, and the question is, do you want us to continue? Is it that we, do you want us to change the bylaw, or do you want us to continue the pilot? And what, what is the question after that?
Well, I think-
That's what I'm asking.
I think that's a good question. I think it's something that we need to work out.
Okay.
My, my, my gut instinct would be, it would be, we did the pilot, these are the results, do you want us to continue this?
Okay, so, do you want us to continue? All right.
I mean, that's, that's my, that's my gut reaction as to what it would be.
I mean, we have the right to say, put, set the speed limit around the rotary at seventy-five miles an hour. The town would not like that. We would not do it.
Some people would.
Some people would, yeah. And I think this, I think this falls into that same category.
It's, it's not.
Yeah.
His Prius can really go.
So, uh, I, I guess what, uh, I, I, you know, I, I think the next step would be, you know, for us to sit down and chat with town council more about, and, and kind of draft up for our next meeting, one, you know, uh-
Draft wording.
More detail as to, like, what this might really be, and then get input on what that-
You know, and there is an element in town which feels that there has not, the democratic process hasn't been followed. Um, it's hopefully, you know, if we ask this question, which I, I don't know how much more clearly we can ask it, um, hopefully, would give them the forum to argue, argue their side of the, you know-
Mm-hmm.
Of the question. And there would be then a town debate, and I would, well, town council will tell us, but I think I would prefer it not to be a ballot question. I would like to have it voted by people who are, have been to the meeting and have heard the discussion, not by somebody who's kind of, you know, just doesn't know what the question really is, and they don't know really how to vote, and-
I think, uh, we can talk to-
Council?
Council and, and Wayne.
What if we said we have a successful pilot hunt program in the fall, and would like you to tell us whether or not to continue, uh, doing so? Yes or no?
Yeah, I mean-
That's-
I think, I think we're going to want to present, you know, more, you know, both sides, I think, maybe, or, you know, I don't know. I think, I think that, um, I don't know that we're going to solve it here tonight.
No.
Um, so, what I would, what I ask, what I, what I would ask is that, you know, the Selectmen allow me to work with Tim on, on coming up with a, a direction, and we chat about it in two meetings from now.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, is there any comments here? I'm going to, I'm going to limit them, though, because we are late, but please come on up. Maybe I'll do just a couple. Uh, we're going to need to give a mic.
One is that, any question that's out there, can-
Wait, one second. Wait, we need to give you a mic.
Yeah, okay. That's okay. Okay, one of the things that, any question that is generated and put forth cannot come with a bias, meaning this is what happened in the deer hunt, and it shouldn't be labeled as successful or unsuccessful. It's up to the people to get all the information, to get the report, and then to make their decision there. It's sort of like telling a little kid, you like chocolate ice cream, don't you? And then kid says, yeah, 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 and so it-
I think I just stated that.
Yeah, so, we, we can't, we can't put a bias in.
Another thing is someone said from the Deer Committee that, no, that the state doesn't have a problem with cameras, but the state does have a problem with hunting in, in-
State parks. So, if you're hunting in a state park, you, you're doing it illegally. So, you, the fact that there's a camera there or not, the state maybe doesn't, doesn't have a position, but you wouldn't have a camera to hunt in a state park because hunting isn't allowed.
Could I just correct you on that? Actually, a lot of state parks in Massachusetts allow hunting. The further west you go, it's almost hundred percent, so, uh-
This great book, this great book?
Great Brook does not allow it, but if you go further out, they do allow hunting.
Okay, because mine was under the impression they didn't.
It's, it's nothing to do, per se, in terms of a, a state edict for all state land.
Okay. Uh, let me ask another question. I disagree with one of the Selectmen who said that a group of, small group of people have caused unneeded angst. I think that is not a comment that's befitting of a Board of the Selectmen person, because they can't feel for somebody else, and they can't feel for the town as a whole. So, I, I take issue with that question. Um, and one of the other things is, we heard earlier today that the, from Sylvia Willard, that, that Mary, the assistant, has spent at least sixty hours uncompensated since mid-July working on the Deer Committee program. If she had been compensated, that would be an impact on the budget, and that should be brought out, because that's going to continue to happen. Another thing is, there was no criteria for success. So, when you look at success, you have to have a criteria to base it on. When you say, we consider it a concess, success, that's not a criteria. And the other question is, does it really accomplish? If it turns out that deer hunting does not accomplish what, a deduction in the deer population, and it hasn't, because the deer population in the state keeps going up, in spite of the fact that the number of deer killed keeps going up. So, if it doesn't accomplish that pur- that purpose, should we ask ourselves, is this really the path to weight?
So, I'm going to interrupt you for one second. What we're talking about tonight is whether or not this should be a ballot question or not? So, if you could just keep your, your comments to-
Oh, okay.
Whether or not we, you know, the Board of Selectmen should either ballot or, you know, bring it to town meeting, not, not, I don't want to hear any more comments about whether or not we should allow hunting or not. You know, it, it's just, it's late.
Yeah.
You got up and you spoke at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
I want to just keep it focused on, our discussion right now is, should we bring it to town meeting or not?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, because the, the item issue just said pilot program. It didn't mention it as a warrant action.
Right, I'm limiting it now.
Okay, no, I have, I, I agree with that. So, anyway, those are my points, and I think that it should come up as a warrant article, and I think, I still say that I am in, I am putting a, I would like to put an article into it about deer hunting, because we don't know what the Board of Selectmen warrant article is going to be, so I'm putting a placeholder in-
You will in two meetings.
Okay.
Well, I don't know about process about that, and how articles, citizen articles actually get pushed. Don't they have to have certain number of signatures, and they have to be-
There's a process, I think you can talk to-
There's ten, there's, I just found out, yes, it's ten signatures of voters that can be verified that they live at the address.
And so, you would draft something, and I think that would actually be rather helpful, if you would do that. Draft what you think looks like a good art, that you would like to see as a warrant article, and bring it to Tim, and if that, you know, maybe that's our article. I don't know.
Okay.
But I'm sorry about that. I didn't know you were eliminating the, um-
Well, we're trying to-
One question. Ed, Ed Hum, nine, seven, I'm sorry, Ed Hum, East Street. One day, when Dan explained the way they're going to hunt, he stated that all of the stands would face away from the trail. No one would be facing the trails. It turned out that two of the fans' stands were facing the trail, and it was very much discussed, and he made light of the fact that you can really swing around, and you really could shoot effectively toward even the direction of the trail. And I find that very disturbing, because he made, time after time, he stated that, that they would all face with their back towards, towards the trail. The other thing is that Dan is a deer agent. I felt he should know where every stand was and have checked it out, but as a matter of fact, he took a trip to, through the hunting area, and he was only able to find a couple of stands. I, I think if you're going, if you were going to continue, that the deer agent should be interested in making sure that the hunters are following the rules, and I don't think that was done.
Is that it? All right. All right. The last one.
I'll try to make it really quick. At the beginning of this meeting, some, someone asked about the public meeting, the public forum to discuss the deer hunt, and it seemed like the response was that this is the public meeting, that it's, that tonight is that public meeting. Am I correct?
No. What I said was, this was the Selectmen's public meeting, talking about whether or not it was going to go to town meeting or not.
Okay, good. Is, so, is there going to be a public meeting?
I think that the Deer Committee had a posted meeting. Is that right?
There's been no posted meeting.
Was that meeting on, in January, January?
Excuse me? There was, because you, when we talked about this, um-
Did you or did you not? You, you had a post, posted public meeting?
Yes.
Now, what, what was the date? And are there minutes for that meeting?
Seconds, yeah.
And was anybody that's in the audience now at that meeting?
January, right there, yes.
Well, to quote something that you said, right, sitting right there, you said, we will make sure that it is well-advertised when this meeting is happening, and then they can come back to the Board of Selectmen, et cetera, et cetera. There's been no well-advertised public meeting.
Were you aware of the, did you go to the meeting?
I've been to Deer Committee meetings, but I haven't been to a public meeting for, to, to, to- I thought that this was to get information from pu- I mean, you know how we feel. I thought this was to gather information from more than just us.
So, all, all of our meetings are public meetings, and that's what I meant by a public meeting? So, what, what were you thinking, you, you were thinking that it was going to be like a-
Well, according to Kerry, he said that the, a public forum is a very different kind of meeting from a Selectmen's meeting, and that a Selectmen's meeting is to, is a meeting for the Selectmen to do the business of the town, as opposed to a public hearing, which is a very different kind of meeting, and that-
Right, so, it, it wouldn't be a public hearing, which is true. That is a very different kind of meeting. That's kind of an official type of public meeting that you do for particular things. Um, but, so, if this is going to town meeting, is that not a public meeting?
Well, what you said was that we would have this, here we go. And so, it seems to me, we have that forum, and there is yet another forum after that, which would be town meeting. That's what you said.
Uh-huh.
So, I just-
Oh, I'm missing something. So, they, they had their meeting, which is a public meeting. We've just had this meeting, which I think that we reached out to some of you, right, Tim? To make sure that you just, I just wanted to make sure you knew that we were talking about this, so I asked him to reach out and make, to make sure that you could come, and then we would have a town meeting. That's-
So, so-
That's three public meetings, plus all of the meetings that we've been getting public input at the beginning of every meeting. Let me finish up here first.
Well, it's, when I first stood here, I read that letter from Judy Azorkov, asking, I believe strongly that an open discussion meeting be held soon to hear from folks in town, and that's when you responded that we would have that meeting, that not a committee meeting, but a, a public forum. And now, it seems as though you're going back on that. That's what it looks like to me.
I, I don't, I don't feel like I am, because the, the Deer Committee put together, they, they had a meeting, and they got public input. Is this right? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I wasn't there.
It's what I was going to say, yeah.
I was, I wasn't there. And, uh, so, you had the meeting, you got public input, you created the report, and then you presented it to us. Did, am I, am I, am I right in that?
Well, let, let me clarify how, how things work. So, the Deer Committee, the Deer Committee put together the deer hunting report, which is what you have, um, read, and that was based upon public input from several sessions before, um, January the second, January the third. January the second, January the third, I can't remember the date. Third, was it? Okay. We actually had a Deer Committee meeting, and on the agenda was public input, and members of the public were given the opportunity to say whatever they had to say, and the draft minutes have been written. I haven't actually, um, I, I can't remember whether I've seen them yet, but basically, the draft minutes haven't been approved by the committee yet. So, there is that, um, document that's still going to be issued. But I think the understanding from the Deer Committee was that that would be the collated input from, from the public, and that it would be all documented as far as the minutes were concerned, and that those would be circulated once they've been approved.
Did you have somebody there from the public at, who attended that meeting?
You, you were there. Everyone who's been tonight. In fact, I think most people who are here tonight were there, so-
All I would say is that you already know how we feel. You didn't get anybody else's opinion, and it would be good, I think. I really wish you would honor what you said and, and actually have a public meeting, where you actually advertise it in the mosquito, and let people come and, and express their opinion, and not have it at, you know, after ten o'clock at night. I think that would be a good thing.
The deer, just clarification, the Deer Committee meeting was advertised in the mosquito, and the agenda was published on the towns, on the towns' website. So, I'm not sure what more we could have done in terms of at least giving people the opportunity to come to the meeting.
So, this, this is the process that, that I was stating, and that I thought that I was agreeing to. So, we had had a discussion while the hunt was in process. I think we actually had a couple of discussions while the hunt was in process, because there was a request to stop the hunt, and we decided, no, we're not going to stop the hunt. And there was a question about, well, what is the next step? And I said, there will be a public meeting, and that's the public meeting that you had, where you're gathering the input in order to create your report. You had that meeting. You provided your report. We're having this meeting. Both of them were published in the mosquito. We reached out to you to make sure that you knew that this particular meeting was happening. So, what your, what, what your request is, is that we have a separate meeting that is published, that, that is, who's leading that meeting? So, is it, is it the, the Deer Committee and the Board of Selectmen are saying, we're going to have another meeting to talk about this? Or, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the difference is in the meeting than we're, we're posting this, this is how we post what our agenda is. People come, uh, we reach out to those people that we know are interested in providing feedback. I, I'm not sure what, what the, how the outcome would be different if we just had another meeting that's the same people.
I, I guess it's my fault for imagining that there would be something, that there would be a larger group of people that would come and, and express their opinion. I mean, we've, we've read some letters to the editor and some editorials in the paper, so we know that there's more than just the few of us and our opinions, that there are more opinions out there. I just imagined something larger, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll think about it. Okay.
Dr. Van Dura, Maple Street, to support the former speaker. We've been waiting for the public meeting. Not to mention names, but, uh, somebody, uh, she mentioned names. We were assured that we would have input to the Deer Committee's final report, and we were told that the BOS is not that public meeting, very, very emphatically, if I have to use names. Kerry said it, and you said it. So, we're waiting for this momentous Deer Committee meeting that was flagged as the public meeting, not just an announcement to Deer Committee. public meeting, not just an announcement, the deer committee will meet on January 3rd. That was just a routine committee. This was supposed to be announced as an input meeting, and we didn't have it, okay? And Kerry, and also our understanding very, very clearly, because we've been talking about it for two months and waiting for this meeting, was not ever going to be the BOS thing. Kerry was emphatic. It has to be a separate, dedicated meeting. It's not the town meeting, which is in the future, and it's not anything to do with the BOS. So, yes, maybe there was a January 3rd meeting, and maybe it was posted, but it wasn't flagged as the public forum meeting. Not that the public are invited in the casual way as always, but this was our forum, or we would have been there. So this is premature to go ahead with anything without that public meeting.
All right. Okay. Thank you all very, very much for coming. You're welcome.
Not many warrant articles.
You can hold that if you want. Okay, so we're moving on. If you could bring your discussion outside. Okay. Tim, do you want to bring us through these?
Sure, sure. This is the entire list of potential town meeting warrant articles, those that are annual and reoccurring, which is the first 18 on the list are, thank you, are articles you've seen before, the budget and the things that have to be on the warrant. And then there's a list of, I think it's 22 or 23 new articles, if you will, or articles that boards and committees, individuals have suggested be included in the warrant, what I've reached out to the proponents of these articles, and I've told them that we'll set up agenda time for each of them to make their pitch, if you will, to the Board of Selectmen as to why their particular request is ready to go forward at town meeting and provide some justification for the request, so that we can separate, you know, the articles that are ready for primetime from the ones that might just be a notion at this point, or not quite fully fleshed out. So we can, if you want to go through the first 18, I think...
I don't think we have to go through the first 18.
Those are, I think, should be without debate. Those will be on there.
Maybe we could not do the budget one.
That could be an option this year. So regarding the new warrant article requests, the first two submitted by the town clerk, general bylaw amendments. One is just a cleanup article, there are, in one section of the bylaw, there are two articles that have the same article number, so she's proposing to fix that, that's the first one. It's a pretty routine cleanup kind of thing. She's also proposing accepting a state statute that allows reduced dog licenses for those over age 70. And I asked her about the reduced fee. It'd actually be a fee waiver. I think the licenses are 10 now, and so there'd be a fee waiver for, available for those over age 70.
Did you talk with her at all about...
Dogs over the age of 70 are...
You know what? That's exactly what I said to Tim when I was on the phone. Did you...
It's a state statute that allows for a fee waiver for...
Now, is this, so you and I had talked about this over the phone, and whether or not it could be made a little bit more generic at the town clerk's discretion, rather than just a set 70. I mean, there might be an income issue, you know. The number 70 seems just kind of arbitrary, right?
I think that's language from the state.
So it has to, it has to be this.
I mean, there may be some flexibility that the clerk could apply on her own initiative, but if you accept that state statute...
It's 70.
It's age 70.
Okay. All right.
All right. Item 3, you remember, the Agricultural Commission had proposed a right-to-farm bylaw, and we did have town council review that, kind of side-by-side with the noise bylaw that pertains to roosters, and we found that there was no conflict. The right-to-farm bylaw is aimed at commercial farming operations and...
Which is excluded in the noise bylaw.
Right.
I think that's what it is. Okay.
There's no conflict inherent there. The next two articles pertain to propose the solar facility lease for both the transfer station and CPS sites. The working group has been working with town council on that, and will be coming in to talk to the selectmen about that.
Do you know when they'll be in to talk about the design?
Well, one of the action items today was to get a design from Ameresco. That's something we've been lacking. We've seen some kind of bad diagrams that don't tell you too much, would you say, Alan?
Yeah, because I think it's still up in...
Characterizes it very well.
It's still up in the air as to which, where it's going and how it's being installed, right?
Right.
Because we did not agree, you know, alongside the road, we did not agree as a canopy, we haven't agreed to anything yet.
Actually, there's two walkthroughs tomorrow with them.
Okay.
With Ameresco, one at the school, one at the transfer station.
Okay.
We're trying to move the law on the design question.
Okay. And then, all right, go ahead.
The next one, the CCRSD has a capital request for $2 million for repaving a roadway and additional parking at the high school. Talked to superintendent, they're planning on coming into one of the February meetings to make that presentation on that capital.
What's our percentage of that, $2 million?
About a quarter, about 25% of that.
And it's not clear at the end of the day whether it's going to stay as one or be broken up as two.
There seems to be more support from the Finance Committee and others for the road reconstruction paving project, more so than the additional parking to accommodate, I guess, high school juniors.
But at this point, it's all one package, so it'll either go up or down.
But they'll... Yeah, explain that.
All right, let's move on.
Item 7 will be, we're holding a place for something for continuation of deer hunting, whether that's as accomplice as a bylaw or a resolution, or if the board decided on a ballot question, it wouldn't be on their warrant at all, but it would be on the election warrant. It remains to be seen how that will be fleshed out. Planning Board has requested master plan funding for $160,000.
Do we know when they're going to plan on coming in, talking to us?
We haven't scheduled them yet. All of the proponents have been told to plan on one of the two February meetings, so we're going to schedule that for the next couple of agendas. Then there is supplemental funding for Complete Streets crosswalk safety projects, $50,000. The Complete Streets grant funded three of the town's four safety projects, and this specific request would be for the one that was not funded by Complete Streets. It would be, I don't know if it's project three or four, but the one that wasn't funded would require additional funding, and they're planning on coming in the 12th to talk about that.
And do we know when we're going to start seeing some plans, and, well, I guess we have to put together that committee first, right?
Put the committee together and gathering quotes from engineering firms on the design, recall, was estimated at about $45,000 or $50,000. And Gary Davis is okay with using the additional Chapter 90 we got in this fiscal year, which was coincidentally about $50,000 to...
I just, I'm not exactly sure why we would ask the town for $50,000 in a year when we already have a really big project that we need to manage. It seems like, why not manage that project and manage it to success, because it has to be done by next June?
Right.
And then see how it goes, and then maybe go back to town and ask for more funding?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That's just my own personal opinion.
Pick up the piece that was left out.
Yeah, but we have a huge project we need to do, right?
But if it's in between the couple of other pieces, then it doesn't make it a complete project.
Yeah. That's why we need more information.
Yeah, I don't know what this is, what, you know, this is...
No, this is...
Does the other three not work, because this doesn't get done?
Right. No, this isn't, this is the one that...
The raised crosswalk.
The raised crosswalk, that wasn't even in the package, right? This is the one that they, this is the $50,000 that they asked for, because no matter what was given to us, this wasn't going to happen.
Okay. It wasn't, yeah.
I think that there's some other fourth part that's not a part of it, that we're not being asked to fund, but we have to find out.
You see it, yeah.
Because we were asked for this $50,000 no matter what.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
All right. And Bob Zog of the Energy Task Force has requested a non-binding resolution on town goals for greenhouse gas emissions. Again, it would be...
So this is what?
Well, it would have to be as a non-binding resolution, because there's no way you could, town meeting couldn't compel the town to achieve certain goals for greenhouse gas emissions.
Green communities.
Yeah, yeah. In general, I could, you know, state, the moderator's not in favor of non-binding questions, that...
He's not in favor of them either.
Articles that are not effective no matter what vote is passed. That's not sort of the intent of town meeting. Then we have two zoning articles from the planning board regarding marijuana, to establish restrictions on sighting and operating recreational marijuana, and another one that would propose a partial or total ban on such uses. And town council's been working with the planning board on those, and we should have some language.
Do you know if it's going to be a partial or a total?
I don't know yet. Whatever it is, you see, the language says that a ballot question has to be proposed by the board.
I was wondering about that. Why is that?
I think that, I think it requires both a town meeting vote and an affirmative ballot vote. If you're going to ban it outright, you've got to, the town has to say so, both at town meeting and at the ballot.
So ban the use of recreation?
No.
So that's what it says?
It's the facility.
Improperly written.
Okay, that's why, that's why I was, that's why I was very confused by this whole thing.
Ban such facilities in town, I think we should. Intent.
Facilities, okay.
All right. Number 13, there would need to be an amendment to the solar overlay district to allow a possible canopy at the Carlisle Public School property over the parking lot, as a zoning amendment. And there's several zoning amendments, all of which I would ask you to vote, to refer to the planning board for public hearings, that's a requirement. They need to have public hearings on all of these, and the way that it works is the selectmen have to ask them to do so. So, at the end of all this, we can't forget to do that.
That's number 11 through 15.
Let's see, 15, right? 11 through 15. Well, I'm sorry, we didn't get that, 15 was a proposed, we thought it would be a zoning, rezoning of 21 to 23 Bedford Road. Instead, they submitted that nitrogen credit bylaw that they, or easement, rather, they didn't present tonight. So that's not really a zoning change, that's a proposed...
So it's 11 through 14.
Right, 11 through 14. All right. Okay, well, then 16 is that citizens petition that Eric Adams was going to present tonight to the Board of Selectmen. The town meeting has to vote to allow the board to grant an easement over town property. Then actually, we have to go out to bid and do a competitive process, because it's an interest in land, and you can't direct a certain interest in land to a certain party without a competitive process, so it's kind of a...
Well, and is, do you know if he's asking to use the entire property?
I don't know.
As an offset, or just a portion of it?
I think it's a portion, but I don't know.
Because that wasn't clear in what he had.
Yeah, that'll have to get fleshed out.
Yes, I mean, I think it's important for us to know, because...
Yeah. Is this because he wants to put a septic in there?
Well, he doesn't want to put a septic in there, he just wants to have that as an offset to the fact that he doesn't have enough land.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Because that's what we were saying, that we could do with golf.
No, it usually has to do with septic going to load it.
It's, he was at the planning board last night, I just happened to be there overhearing it, but it's in case they have a failed septic. Basically, right now, they're restricted because they're non-conforming to the septic they have, and therefore can't change use, can't change anything, can't do anything. So if they want to change the use, or if they have a failed septic, then they would need more land than they have, so it would be to have that credit land available in case they needed to do that.
That credit land in order to actually put a septic there?
No, it's, you don't put anything there, it's just land that can't be used for anything else, because you've used that, that's what credit land means. It's credited to their septic.
Maybe I didn't word it right, but that's what I was meaning to say.
Nothing actually goes there. Yes.
But it would, but it would mean that the town would never be able to do anything
there, except to park, or something that did not in any way violate the rules around a...
An add of nitrogen.
Credit land. Credit land is, you know, a permanent restriction on the property. Anyway, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just go back to 14 for half a second? Because I'd like to know...
This gets back to, this goes back to the Woodward property, right?
Is that the...
Right.
Yeah, but why would we, why would the town install and maintain a public water supply?
It's in case we ever...
Preserve the...
This is just, this is just to, for the town to have the right, and this should be changed, it should say include piping for public water supply facilities.
That would be go somewhere else, or what?
The town has reserved water rights on what used to be the O'Rourke land.
Right.
And so all this does is it would allow for a piping for that to run through the open space that we hope to get from the...
Okay, that's the one that we saw the other day, that we said was...
But why would we say just the pipes? I mean, what if in the future, there's another...
Because it's all, because that needs to be open space. And putting a public water supply there would be a change of use that would be a problem. So this is just to solve the change of use just for piping. Because the only public water supply opportunity the town has is on the O'Rourke land, we're not looking to change that. It's just, if we ever were to use that, we need to be able to, as efficiently as possible, get it to the road, that's all. So this has nothing to do with whether we want to do that or not. It's just to allow it to happen and to put it in the bylaw, so we don't have the problem with the CR. The reason I did this was because when Ivory was here last time...
Okay, all right.
And I said, "I think we're going to have the problem here." And then afterwards, I went back and learned from Steve Hinton and Wayne, and I've been working with town council, and we have the bylaw in place, and I just, I'm going to review it with the developer and the...
That makes way more sense than what I...
But it's important that this should say, in case, to the extent that this is a public document, it should say include piping for public water supply facilities, so it doesn't sound like we're authorizing the putting of a public water supply.
That's what it looked like.
Exactly.
I was like, why in the world would I want to do that?
So 15, we're not doing 16. We need more information. 17.
17 is to amend the list of scenic roads. Rockland Road, I know is one, I think, there's also some interest in adding streets.
We always get requests for scenic roads for dead-end streets. What's with that?
And it's the residents of Rockland Road who want this? Because it makes, it can make their life, oh, well, trees.
Came more from the planning board.
It's on the public, I know, but it makes the town's life maybe more difficult if a tree needs to come down for whatever reason.
Okay, the next, general bylaw amendment to change the designation of membership on the CPC from Carlisle Housing Authority to Housing Trust currently. This was one David had bird-dug for us, that that needs to change if... This was one David had bird-dug for us, that that needs to change if authority goes away. An article nineteen, Recreation Commission is requesting twenty thousand dollars for a, a field study, Spalding Field.
Spalding doesn't have a U in it, by the way.
It does here.
It does now.
Now.
It's a public document.
Too late to change it.
Those baseballs are wrong.
That's right, it must have been the.
It's not named after the baseball.
All right. And the Facilities Committee requested a, a warrant article for possible remediation of contaminated soil due to fuel tank removal at the fire station. And I think the hundred thousand dollars was kind of a guess on their part, but to have something on the warrant that could provide in case the news is very bad.
Turns out to be bad, but we don't expect it. We'll know before March.
We would know whether or not this was.
Remediation plan has to be written before, in, by March anyway, so.
And the Household Recycling Committee has asked for a resolution regarding whether the town would support a pay-as-you-throw solar waste program. And also, with town meeting vote, requested to dissolve the Carlisle Housing Authority and transfer its responsibilities to the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust. Whatever form that takes.
Should eliminate all the words after authority on that.
There's nothing official about that.
No, I understand, but again, for, to the degree this is a public document and since we have a reporter here, it's very important that town meeting has no say in whether the authority transfers.
In fact, that might already have been done.
Well, it's in process.
That's what I mean, by the time we get to meet town meeting, that might already have been done.
The vote is just to dissolve the housing authority.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So thank you for that. So is there a motion to send item number eleven, the new zoning regarding requirements and restrictions on citing and operating recreational marijuana facilities? Number twelve, partial or total ban on recreational marijuana uses. Item number thirteen, an amendment of section five point three of the solar photovoltaic facilities to expand to the Carlisle School property. And number fourteen, an amendment to section five point one-two, R O S C, to expand allowing uses for public waters, piping installed and maintained by the town to the planning board. And fifteen, zoning, I thought that they withdrew this one.
That was not submitted. That, that, we thought that was coming in. They, they came in with the citizen's petition on the nitrogen instead, so. So you can eliminate fifteen.
Is there, is there a motion there?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Just your eye.
Read eye.
Oh.
Brown eye.
School lower.
Louis eye.
It's late when I can't think of my last name. Okay. Liaison reports.
I haven't been to any meetings, it's nice.
I've been to several, but I'll keep it short. The negotiations with Amoresco have been moving slowly, but they're coming tomorrow for, to do a site visit to the school and to the transfer station. I will be there for the transfer station component.
Okay.
We, we are putting the, we pushed down on the accelerator a bit on that process because the longer it takes, there's a lot of stuff that has to happen both before and after town meeting in order to get that accomplished, to get stuff moving forward. And the longer we wait, the lower down the block we're going to be and the less the reimbursement will be.
Yeah. Okay.
Unless the pilot will be.
We've still both been working on fire department, on fire chief thing. We're not going to present anything there tonight.
And the, and the police negotiations are going forward.
Okay.
Yes.
All good.
Well, we had one meeting. We're going to have our first meeting next week. No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Luke and I are still working on the police chief contract based upon the feedback that we got and a resetting with the chief.
Yep.
And the teachers, we're meeting with them on February.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
It's a big day for you.
So we're, we're meeting with them to continue those negotiations.
So FinCom has mostly, you know, finished up, they're, they're buttoning up, they're looking forward to their last coordination, well, not the next coordination meeting with us. Their municipal facilities committee is doing a number of studies, one of which is a site study for the VPW because we've got a lot of issues there that, the contract for TBA architects for the feasibility study for the police department has been signed and there should be work starting on that to develop a plan so that will bring, that, you know, that'll be on the warrant. We'll have more, better, it won't be a tight number, but it'll be a better.
So should that be added?
It's in there.
There it is.
Yeah, it's.
We only just went through the list.
I know, it's in here. It was, yeah, anyway, it's in the capital projects.
Oh, it was in the section we skipped over.
Yes, yeah. What else? Long-term caps is working and there, we've reduced that budget, it's fairly, you know, a couple of places and, and it's almost finished to be, and almost ready to be given to the FinCom so that they can put it in their budget so they can present it to you.
Okay, Carrie.
Nothing here, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, how formal. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, one last thing. The Carlisle Housing Trust wanted to recommend two people, Maureen Deary and George, I forgot his last name, no, not George, Maureen Deary and Jonathan Stevens to be appointed as members. Did we put that on the agenda?
Put that on the agenda.
Actually, it should have actually been on this week because they thought they were, they were here because they thought they were going to be appointed tonight.
No, we're just wasting their time.
Yeah.
We'll get it on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could maybe do an executive session for the chief's contract.
Yeah, let's do an executive session for a chief's contract, too.
Yeah, we'll get that on. Did you want a copy of the report, the deer? Did you have a, you want to pay for a copy? We're just going to end up tossing ours. Here, we got a couple. Do you mind if I can?
I've got more, I've got one, too, if you want it.
I got one also.
Yeah.
Is the deer coming?
It's already printed for.
Oh, those are the ones, I have submitted a fairly substantial edit and what I would like to do is have these motion, action on this.
You want us to discuss it next time?
Minutes to be postponed.
Okay.
Yes, please. We do have thirty days or three meetings, whichever is longer. And since I won't be making the next meeting, would it be okay to put it on, what, the twenty-sixth, the meeting on the twenty-sixth?
That's, that's fine with me, but if you wouldn't mind, if you're going to edit them, do it in red lines so that we can all see what you edited.
Okay.
All right, is there anything further? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Carrie, read eye.
Brown eye.
School lower. Louis eye.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for attending.
Actually, it's pretty good.
Not too bad, within ten minutes.